7:00 PM, I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, February 8th, 2021. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Peel.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Grover.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Karubis.
Here.
Mr. Razak.
Here, we are all present, and of course, we have a quorum. Mr. Rising, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one board salute, Ms. Grover, I think you have that.
The board salutes Matia Valley High School Debate Team, Nerds Speaking Words, for their recent championship win over their team's High Decker Memorial Tournament. The Mustangs captured the victory by placing 27 events into final rounds and accumulating 435 total points. Congratulations to all involved and good luck in the postseason, and go, go Mustangs!
Thank you, Ms. Grover. We now move to our student representative reports. We're not having a lot of luck with the weather on our Mondays, but we thank two student representatives for joining us today. Our first is from Matia Valley High School, Brooke Pegues. Brooke, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Brooke Pegues, and I am the Class of 2021 Executive Board Representative for MB Student Government. I am very excited to join you all tonight. On January 18th, Matia continued our annual MLK Day of Service. Even though we were virtual, over 300 students collected carloads of toiletries to donate to the community and write thank you letters to our teachers and local healthcare workers. Students also participated in Zooms with local community members in nursing homes. Thank you to our Mustangs for a great day of service. We are starting our winter low-risk sports this week. Our athletes and coaches are looking forward to a safe and fun season. Currently, the Athletic Department is completing ways to honor our athletes. Where are they now for our graduates? Athletes of the Month boards, and celebrating multi-sport athletes by graduating class via posters in our athletic hallway. We will also go to a touchscreen system to preserve MB history for years to come that acknowledges our incredible athletes and teams. Our annual student-written and directed shows, Winter Scenes, will have a virtual show coming soon. Break a leg to all of our Mustangs. The Scholastics Art Competition is a national competition that recognizes our nation's youth's exceptional vision and provides an opportunity for students to be awarded for their creative talents. With nearly 2,000 entries from our region, Matia Valley is proud to announce that 15 student artists have received Scholastic honors. Congratulations to our artists on their accomplishments. That is all I have for the February Board Report. Thanks, everyone, and until next time, go, go Mustangs!
Thanks, Brooke. Our next student representative report is from Niqua Valley High School, and it's Sean Feldman, welcome, Sean.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Sean Feldman, the MB Student Council School Board Representative. It's my pleasure to represent Niqua tonight. On January 26th, Niqua welcomes students back to its classrooms for the first time this year. Students who have elected to learn in person now have the option to be in the building for two days a week attending their regular classes. In order to maintain a safe and healthy learning environment, all students are asked to follow five basic principles: wear a mask, wash your hands, respect six feet distance, stay around the hallways, and mind the directions of each stairway. Niqua was so proud of a safe and successful transition to in-person learning. Thank you to all the hard work by our faculty and our staff to ensure a safe and successful transition, and we are proud to have the Wildcat students back in the building. With a new semester kicking off, Niqua has announced the schedule in preparation for many of its annual stage performances, this year being held virtually. The Niqua Multicultural Show will be held on February 14th, which gives students the opportunity to express their culture and identity through various performances. The Improv Show will be held on February 19th featuring student actors from the Niqua Theater Department. The Variety Show will be made public later in March. This annual event allows Niqua students to perform their talents for the school. Student acts will be prerecorded, and social distancing requirements will be enforced for any group performances. The Niqua Monologue Show will be held on March 12th, which gives students the opportunity to stand up and share their own run with their community. The Orchestis Showcase will be held on March 17th featuring performances from Niqua's amazing Orchestis team. And the Niqua Theater Department will be holding its annual play, this year being Frozen Junior later in May. Congratulations to Niqua Wildcats as they take the stage these next few months, and we are so excited to have these events return for another year and looking forward to watching our students perform. Moving on to athletics, winter sports have been able to commence with basketball, boys swim and dive, dance, cheer, badminton, gymnastics, and bowling, all beginning their practice for the winter seasons, with more sports scheduled to begin later in the semester. Good luck to all student athletes as they retake the fields, and we look forward to watching their success this season. And lastly, congratulations to the Niqua Speech Team on being regional champions. That is all for the Niqua Board Report today. Thank you all so much for your time, and as always, go Wildcats!
Thank you, Sean. We do have people signed up for public comment, but it's public comment for agenda items, and we will take that public comment prior to that agenda item. So then, we now move to the Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. We begin with the Superintendent Report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Razak, members of the Board and the Indian Prairie community. Since the last Board of Ed meeting, I'm very happy to say that we have completed the phase in of in-person learning across the system. It has gone very well. More about reopening and the COVID-19 update. However, at this time, I do want to stress to our students and to their families the need for our students to have their cameras on and pointed at them when they are learning remotely. Now more than ever, our remote students need to have their cameras on so that when teachers are zooming and rooming, teachers will see the students as they engage with them and those in the classrooms. Our teachers are working very hard to meet the needs of our students. It's very hard for our teachers to connect with the students when they do not turn their cameras on during the lesson. If a student has an issue with turning on his or her camera, the student is encouraged to talk directly with the teacher. If there are no such issues, students should have their cameras on and ready to engage visually with the teachers. February is National African-American History Month. Since 1986, when Congress passed Public Law 99-244, which designated February as National Black Afro-American History Month, there has been a national observance of understanding the many and varied contributions that African-Americans have made to our society. During this month, our schools are examining how African-Americans have made contributions to science, mathematics, the arts, literature, exploration, education, human justice, and to our everyday lives. Our schools are now in the process of celebrating this month in many different ways to ensure all students and staff are engaged in the learning. Mr. Razak, before I return the meeting back to you, I would like the Board of Ed to accept and vote on my candidate for Assistant Superintendent for High Schools, Dr. Nicole Howard. Dr. Howard rose to the top of the interview process that included more than 40 candidates for the position. Dr. Howard is currently the Assistant Superintendent for Academics and Family Services for Proviso Township High School District 209. She has served as a mathematics teacher, chief academic officer, principal, and special education teacher. She has a focus on listening and hearing what people say, ensuring our school addresses the learning needs of her high school students, and building relationships that foster learning and collaboration. I know she's here tonight, and I ask the Board of Ed to vote in favor of my recommendation. I'll now turn it back to you, Mr. Razak, and I'll speak a little bit more later on during the COVID update.
And do you also have an approval for comptroller?
Ah, I'm sorry, I do. I do want you to-
Okay, so why don't we take first, Dr. Tally, your recommendation for Assistant Superintendent. So I do need a motion to approve Dr. Nicole Howard, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Teaching and Learning.
I move that the Board of Education approve Dr. Nicole Howard as Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Teaching and Learning High Schools as presented.
Second?
There's a motion and second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Jeannie, please call the roll.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover. Mr. Karubis.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero, congratulations, Dr. Howard.
Mr. Razak, I would like the Board to consider for tonight, Dr. Sheri Whitaker, who is going to be our new comptroller, replacing Matt Shipley, who has moved into a new position. Dr. Whitaker comes to us with a variety of experiences and backgrounds, having a degree, a doctorate in education in adult and higher ed, a master's in school business management, an MBA, and as well as a bachelor's science degree. She is currently Chief Financial Officer with East St. Louis School District 189. She rose high to the, of more than 40 people running for the position, and we're very excited for her coming and joining us tonight.
And I need a motion to approve Dr. Sheri Reynolds Whitaker as comptroller.
I move that the Board of Education approve Dr. Sheri Reynolds Whitaker as comptroller as presented.
And is there a second? There is a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, Jeannie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Karubis.
Yes.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Razak.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero, welcome, Dr. Whitaker. We look forward to working with you. And I guess now we're going to move to the approval of the Consent Agenda items. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items F through H as presented.
Actually, it's D through H.
What's F through H?
F through H.
I move that the Board of Education approve Agenda H as presented.
Second, this is Kathy.
We do have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Jeannie, call the roll.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Ms. Raz- Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Karubis.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are going to move to our discussion item, and as a result, we have several people who've signed up for public comment. So it is now time for public comment for agenda items. If you hear to, 30 minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by administrator as appropriate. Our first speaker is Patty Shuddy. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. These past few months have been very difficult. Both my children have yet to make a single new friend, even though we moved almost five months ago. We thought hybrid schooling would finally give the children a chance to interact with their peers, but that was not to be. I am shocked and bewildered at the truly unscientific and absurd policies that are being implemented at schools across 204. It is our third week into hybrid, and my high schooler tells me that the lunch hour is spent sitting around doing nothing, because apparently, eating or talking with your peers has now been deemed to be dangerous. My elementary child tells me that they get stood out in the below-freezing temperatures for mask breaks on little paw print stickers and are forbidden from leaving that spot. Are the paw prints there, or are they intended to make these extreme restrictions look like fun? Or are they perhaps there to distract the children from the biting cold? I do not know. Either ways, it isn't working. So the children need to be outdoors freezing to avoid COVID, but never mind if they catch something else from the exposure to the cold? How does that make any sense? The present hybrid timetable is disruptive, especially for working parents. Elementary students essentially finish school by 11:30 AM on hybrid days. The independent work assigned has kept my daughter probably busy for an hour longer. So with great difficulty, we managed to achieve just about three hours of synchronous and asynchronous learning on these days. Yeah, sure, we're checking the box, the in-person learning box, but we are also having to compromise greatly on the quality and quantity of education, not to mention the continued isolation, which is a direct result of the draconian restrictions imposed upon the children. Our children are falling behind academically, socially, physically. For months, we have known that schools are not super-spreaders. Children are neither at risk nor do they transmit the virus easily. Why is 204 having such a hard time bringing some semblance of normalcy back for our children? Indeed, we must follow the science on this most important issue, which is our children, our future. It is now beyond time to give them their lives back. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brea Khalid. Welcome, Brea.
Thank you. Just give me a moment, I need to-
Sure.
-pull up a audio. My name is Brea Khalid, and I wanted to play a quick video for you.
I'll do anything I want!
Okay, but here's the deal, I'm gonna let you do, you're gonna have some playtime, okay? But you have to get your work done.
No, I'm not doing it right now!
But you, you have to, though. The teacher wants you to get your independent work done.
But I don't want it right now, you said I'm gonna do it right now!
Eliza, no, I told you. I know that it's-
You didn't say it for one minute, though!
Let's do five more minutes, okay? Five more minutes?
No!
I could go on, but I won't. That was my six-year-old, Eliza. This recording is here to show you what many parents are experiencing right now. We have a major education breakdown going on right now, so I encourage every parent to email their videos to the Board if they're experiencing the same thing that I am. As for my seventh grader, she wakes up 10 minutes before class, opens her Chromebook, and lays in bed. Hybrid has begun, but the orchestra and Spanish teachers have chosen to Zoom from home. So I decided to call the principal, and we switched her out of both cello and Spanish and into different classes. Last thing that my daughter wanted was to be in-person to learn, only to see her teachers home on a whiteboard screen. We chose hybrid to get live in-person instruction, not their teachers zooming from home, and we won't settle for this. Many students are remote due to working parents and a horrific hybrid schedule that was created. Does two and a half hours of in-person sound like a good idea to any parent who actually works for a living? Why does my elementary-age kid only go two and a half hours, yet my middle schooler goes five hours? Isn't elementary age the most critical age to be in-person? Students tell me that they stay remote because it's so much easier. They don't want to get up early, and I've actually overheard kids talking and laughing about how remote is great because they get to be on their iPhones and not turning their cameras on. So there you have it, the issue isn't that we are afraid of getting COVID, but that it's a mere convenience. We have a large percentage of students not going back because it's less convenient. Let me reiterate, we have a major educational breakdown going on. Meanwhile, private schools are on waiting lists to get in. Members of the Board, if your goal is to get the entire student body to switch to private schools or move out of the district, then you're doing a bang-up job, and I want my money back so I can take it and enroll my kids in private school. In order to maximize full potential, kids need in-person full-time instruction. We don't need any more excuses, other schools have figured it out, so should you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Singer. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you.
Can I ask that everyone wear their masks? I know it's difficult, but-
Okay, my name is Ryan Singer, and I'm the mom of two boys in fifth and seventh grade. Both have always loved school and, by all accounts, have been successful academically. Over the past year, I've watched them both struggle to focus and engage in their schoolwork while also becoming sullen and apathetic, to say the least. I'm speaking today because I'd like to know what your plan is for returning our kids to the classroom five days a week. After nearly a year of this remote learning, I'm happy my kids have finally begun the hybrid plan, but I fear you think this plan is acceptable for the long term. In fact, they now have less live learning with their teachers in far more independent time. I'm happy they have a reason to get dressed and leave the house two days a week, but the limited interaction with their teachers and peers is not nearly enough. I know many parents and students who chose to stay remote simply because it wasn't worth the effort. Older kids preferred to roll at about a few minutes before their start time. Some even said it's easier to cheat. Their grades were better than if they'd been in school. And for working parents, especially at multiple schools, this schedule is a nightmare. Schools across this country, and many right here in Illinois, are open five days a week or are gradually increasing their in-person hours. But here, in this award-winning district, we have waited almost a full year for this hybrid plan, which has my fifth grader going twice a week for two and a half hours each. And an age group that's least adversely affected by COVID and least likely to be spreaders, how, that's the best you could do? After his two and a half hours of in-person learning, he comes home and has roughly three hours of independent time, which in essence is about 20 minutes of real work. How is he going to be ready for middle school? He won't be. I believe it was roughly a 50/50 split in those who chose remote versus hybrid. You've also said that those who chose remote could not change back to hybrid. I've heard from multiple parents, especially at the high school level, whose kids have only a few others in their class. What could possibly be the issue with our increasing in-person hours? The CDC has said schools should be open, but also that teachers being vaccinated should not be a prerequisite. Schools are simply not the super-spreaders. We also know that, by all accounts, suicide and depression in teens have skyrocketed. Yet for almost a year, you've isolated our kids, taking away every connection they have to their peers, school, sports, music, theater clubs, and yet our kids have been resilient and pushed through. It's time to put them first. If it's a liability you're worried about, have us sign a waiver. We do it for almost everything nowadays. I'm sure most parents that want their kids in school would gladly sign it. I'd like to know, does 204 even have a plan for when our kids can go back five days a week? I know there's a plan, excuse me. I know there's a plan for when you will scale back to fully remote. You've been sure to point that out repeatedly. But what are the metrics you are looking for to tell us it's time to go back full-time? For that, there is no transparent plan. Who makes that decision? Is it you, Dr. Tally, and this Board who have no medical expertise? Almost the entire state is now in the last phase of mitigations, and the state's positivity rate is the lowest it's been in months. In fact, surrounding states whose kids are in school have had positivity rates four times higher than Illinois. But yet, here we are. It's time this Board shows some leadership and prioritizes our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tony Dugger. I might not have that right, but Tony? Welcome, Tony.
Thank you. So I'm also here to talk about the plan for kids to return to school beyond the current hybrid model. On January the 5th, I emailed Dr. Tally asking what the plan was to move beyond the initial hybrid model. Since then, I know many of the people sitting in this room and many people outside of this room have emailed you, the Board, asking those same questions. We've heard issues about social distancing, we've heard issues about busing, we've heard issues with switching teachers. And basically, what I've heard is, we were doing a lot of analysis, but we failed to come up with a plan. At this point, almost a full year into this pandemic, not having a plan is unacceptable. We're on February the 8th, and there's been no plan shared with any of the parents on what the steps are, what the conditions are to move to further in-person learning. So, many other districts around 204, very close to us, have figured this out. I've heard excuses about, you can't compare 204 to other districts because we're not the same. Well, I'm sorry, that's exactly what we should be doing, is comparing 204 to other districts, and learning from what those districts are doing, what's working, what's not. I don't expect that you could take a plan for another district and just lay it in place for 204, but I do expect you to be able to learn what works and what doesn't. So, a multi-phase plan to get kids from the hybrid model back into a full-time learning is what is needed. Many of you will say that should have come, this group will say that should have come before the school session started in August. We had the whole summer to plan, and there was not a plan put in place. So, we don't expect a perfect plan. You make assumptions, you share those assumptions, and you adjust as you go forward. We don't need a perfect plan, we need a plan. You cannot wait until all the facts are known before making a plan. If you do, you'll never come up with a plan, it'll be too late. So, a good plan today is better than a perfect plan tomorrow, and a goal without a plan is just a wish. So once again, I ask you, what is the plan to move beyond the initial hybrid model? If you don't have one, you need to develop one immediately. This should have been done prior to the school year, and if you're not putting together a plan, your failure to plan is your plan to fail. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Metzler. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate your time. We heard from the prior speaker the problems that we've heard continuously here about the need that we can't compare 204 to other districts, our size, our challenges. Well, we shouldn't be comparing 204 to other districts. We're supposed to be a leader. This is an exemplary district that's supposed to set the bar, not follow what other districts are doing. We're now in the back row waving, seeing what everyone has done. We talked about communication. No more surveys, no more other ideas. We heard plenty of times of how we're coordinating with other districts throughout DuPage about what they're doing, what they're thinking, how we get the right amount of hours for our kids. What happened to that communication? We could take communication further. There's no feedback from here, you hear what we're saying, and I appreciate your time. How about we set up two-way communication? Let's set up a Zoom. The Board, Dr. Tally, your Assistant Superintendent, members from our group, teachers, members from the folks that want to be remote only. Let's have a collaborative effort to try and get what's in everyone's best interest instead of just being heard and no response. There's families that are spending private school prices to have their kids housed in our school gyms. We're renting out our school gyms for them to be watched. No academics, no supervision, other than babysitting, for private school prices. There's been 18 to 20 kids, by accounts that I've heard There's been 18 to 20 kids, by accounts that I've heard and others have in NIQA and other schools, to take the ACT recently. How can we have 18 to 20 in a school, in a classroom, to take the ACT, but we can't have a class full of students at the same time? Where's the revenue coming from renting out the gyms for the YMCA and others to bring these kids in? What are the families supposed to do to continue making ends meet when they both have to go to work, pay these high prices? They might as well have signed their kids up in September for private school, and it's not fair to them. There's a lot of things that are going on here that we can really fix if there was real two-way communication and we had a real seat at the table, as others should, to have this talk. I, for one, do not want to wait and see one of the tragedies that's happened in a surrounding district to occur here before the seven of you on the board and otherwise decide to finally take action. It's not something anyone should be waiting to see happen. So let's make a decision. Let's hear what people have to say. And let's move forward and try to get the schools open the proper way. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Next speaker is Randy Worrey. Randy?
How are we doing tonight, guys?
Welcome, Randy.
Thanks. So I have a different opinion on a few of these things. Great points so far, amazing points. The idea, too, is I would really like any of you to have a nine-year-old and tell her, "We're going to have a couple hours of independent learning and see how that's going to go." It's a disaster. My kids have random meltdowns. They can't explain the depression levels. One of the other speakers had mentioned, too, that you pump the kids with vitamin D. And my wife has been a teacher for 17 years with a different district. So I understand. I feel like I can understand a couple of the sides, you know, either way. But I also know that this, we need to know what's happening as far as the five days a week. I switched basically roles so I can stay with the kids. Cost-effective, trying to keep my job, essentially, because two to three hours, you know, going to school for the nine-year-old, like we mentioned before, the youngest, is, has the least amount of time. I don't have the schedule, nor I don't really know who anybody does who says, "Well, I'm okay to work from 8 to 11." They're lacking, they're hurting. I understand you guys want the cameras on. Kids have found every loophole in the world. There is no drive, right? Like, the drive is gone. That's why people don't take work to their vacation home, because you want to go there for vacation. So the idea of them, they're hurting so much academically now, too. And I know I speak as well as what everybody else says on that, too. Five days a week, we need to know. Many other districts have had it. I coach in two different districts for certain things, too. Since day one, they've been going hybrid, all three options. Nothing's changed. Everything's going okay. The last thing I want to touch on, too, my wife and I both, as being veterans of the Marine Corps, I have never lived my life in fear, nor do I teach my kids to. So the idea of living such a sheltered life and being afraid of anything that's germ-related, that's not what's going to happen. The idea, too, is that when people are afraid of something they don't know about, we don't need that, okay? And the other thing was with the teacher. My wife has spent many nights crying. She's upset. She's taking nothing but pride in her job for just under two decades. And she's upset at the fact, knowing that, she's upset because she knows she hasn't talked to a lot of teachers that share the same mentality she does, and she's mainly upset because she can't do what she was hired to do. She can't teach the kids like, and that's across the board. You know, you can't expect the kids... I'm telling you right now, I'm trying to do my job from home. It's impossible, you know? When they, when they're asking me for something, I'll see an email, but I can't address it. I have to tell my daughter, my son, "Can't help you right now, you're on a conference call." This is, it's ludicrous. I don't understand why. Once again, Jeff had mentioned a few other ones as well. Other districts have worked it out. I don't know why we can't. Is that my timer? Is it? Last thing, because I'm just going to go over my timer because I'm cool like that, is just, I understand that, I think everybody's being pretty even-keeled temperament-wise, too. Nobody wants to blame. I know it's about killing the messenger, but let's just have a plan. Thanks.
Thanks, Randy. Next speaker is Kavita. Welcome, Kavita.
Hey there. My name is Kavita Sivanandan. I am the mother of two boys. I have a junior at NIQA and a sixth grader who goes to Chrome. The human in me wants to thank you, wants to thank you for the hybrid plan. There is nothing better than seeing my child wake up on a Tuesday morning. He gets dressed, my sixth grader. He gets dressed, he eats his breakfast, he's ready, he's ready to go. When he comes home from school, he comes into my office. I work, I work a full-time job, I work from home now. He sits in there with me to tell me about his day. He tells me about all the new friends he's made. He tells me about this teacher that he just adores. He's liked this teacher, she's been amazing. And he finally says, "Ma, I actually got to see her, and she's really nice." But anyways, you know, these are conversations that I look forward to. I appreciate that. And for that, I want to thank you. As a mom, though, I want to say, "What took you so long? What took you so long?" My children have been home since March 13th. We are a first-world country. District 204 is part of a first-world country. What are you doing to our children? How many of you actually have children in our school district? Yeah, that's what I thought. You know, other first-world countries are doing it. We just, we cannot keep doing this. You can't expect... I'm a working mother. I have a sixth grader. My child woke up this morning, and the remote kids had their AIMS, had their standardized testing. He logs in at 8 o'clock, 8:12, he's done. Guess what my sixth grader is doing for me at 8:12? He's making crepes for breakfast. Because that's how, yeah, because that's how rigorous our education system is in District 204. I moved here for the schools. If I'm going to sit here and educate my child, this is just ridiculous. And you need to reevaluate this. We've waited too long. We're running out of patience here. My high schooler goes into school Tuesdays and Wednesdays. He goes in from 7:25 to 12:20, something like that. On Tuesdays, he gets a 70-minute break. You know what he does? He sits there by himself. Yeah? Do you enjoy sitting there by yourself? No. So don't make my high schooler do that. The CDC says you wear a mask when you cannot keep six feet apart. Why is District 204 harping on the six feet? Where are you getting the science from? Let's be honest, you know, I want to commend you for attempting the hybrid plan. Yeah? I, you took the effort, great. You do not get an A. You know why? Because this plan is an utter waste of time. You are wasting my time, you're wasting my child's time, you're wasting the time of children who are home. Let us be in-person. Let us be in-person. I need transparency. I need to know if I need to put my house on the market and move out of here. Because clearly, District 204 does not have its act together. And I would, I'm urging you to please get your act together. Give me a plan. Give me a plan. Today is mid-March, mid-February. Yeah, give me a plan. My children belong in school five days a week. Yeah, stop nickel-and-diming my child. Thank you, thank you, and I appreciate you looking into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Violeta.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Violeta. I have two children, one in sixth grade and the other one in fifth grade. Hybrid is defined as something that has two types of components performing the same function. The hybrid learning program in District 204 is not equal time on remote and in classroom learning. Elementary schools only have two 2.5-hours days for a total of five hours a week in school. Middle schools are two five-hours day in school, 10 hours a week. High school is around 10 hours, but I just heard what she said, seven minutes for lunch. How is this sustainable in the long run? Hybrid learning has shown to be lacking and challenging for everyone involved. Remote learning was okay as a contingency plan for short-term, but never meant to substitute for in-person learning. Other larger school districts within our state have successfully implemented full days of kids in schools. Why hasn't District 204 left a way in developing a plan to get kids back into schools? Is there a plan? I think everybody has the same question. Last year, in the fall, there was a plan which was scrapped to keep everyone safe. We are safer now. COVID cases are inching downward. Vaccines are forthcoming for teachers. Where is a target day to open our schools? What are you waiting for? CDC has stayed, opening schools for in-person learning as safely and quickly as possible. And keeping them open is important, given the many known and established benefits of in-person learning in order to enable in-person learning and assist schools with their day-to-day operations. It is important to adopt and diligently implement actions to slow the spread of the virus that causes COVID-19 inside the school and out in the community. Even with teachers' extraordinary effort to adapt to teaching on Zoom and in-person, we, as a community, are failing our kids. Their long-term repercussions are still yet to be determined. But we must find a way to open our schools for full-time instruction. There must be a plan put in place and executed, you want to get our kids back in school full-time. What you are doing to our kids is not fair, guys. I used to, I am a realtor, and I used to tell my clients that District 204 was a good district. Now, I don't know what to say to my clients. I don't know what to say to my kids. So open the schools. They need to be back full-time.
Thank you. And our last speaker tonight is Luke Ernst. Welcome, Luke.
Hello? Hi, Luke. That's okay, I'll just bend down. My name is Luke Ernst. I'm a junior at Niqua Valley High School. And I'd like to offer a few reflections on my week back to, and my week back in person for the hybrid schedule. I go on for two days a week, start school at 7:25. I have PE in all my classes. It's great. It's good to be back in person. It's good to feel like everything is going back to normal. It's good to see my friends, and it's good to actually talk to the teachers in person. It's good to have that human interaction, not just see little boxes on a Zoom screen. It's nice. But the other part of the week, which is the second half, is when I go back to Zoom classes. And it's not my favorite. I don't like going back, sitting in my basement where my office is, sitting back and seeing all those screens. And some of my classes, you just see a majority of black boxes because they don't choose to put their screens on. So it's a one-way conversation between me and the teacher, which isn't fun. It feels like I'm not getting anything out of the class. On top of all that, and on the Zoom, and the 70-minute classes of just me sitting there and listening, it's, the amount of assignments that I'm getting that are online is crazy. It's just, you have a 70-minute Zoom class, and then the teacher says, "All right, students, on Google Classroom, you have two worksheets waiting for you. I need them done by the end of, or by, you know, by next class." So as I get off of Zoom, I have a little bit of a break, but then I get back on my computer, and I spend more and more time on my computer. My eyes are glued to the screen. It's the worst because I don't have any time. I mean, I do, but I don't have that much time off-screen. It's always on-screen. I miss those days of getting a worksheet or a packet from my teachers where I can sit down with my head down, I have a pen in one hand, and I have my paper, and I can just fill out the worksheet. Now it's, my life consists of Zoom, Zoom, and Google Classroom assignments, and then that's it. And then I have youth group activities, but those are all on Zoom. So I have Zoom for school, I have Zoom for my extracurriculars, and that's pretty much my life right now. And it's not fun. We take care of our physical health in school by ensuring that we wear masks, that we're social distancing, that we're washing our hands, but we're not taking care of our physical, or we're not taking care of our mental, our emotional, our social, and even our spiritual health. So I'd like to ask you, what are we doing as a district to ensure the mental, or the mental and the social health of our individuals, of our students? Because I feel like I'm kind of focusing more on my physical health and not really on my mental or social health as a student. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Luke. And we now move to our discussion item, the COVID-19 update. Dr. Tally? Welcome, Mr. Akarios.
Thank you, Mr. Razak, members of the board. Tonight, we will have an update about our metrics and a discussion about the first three weeks of in-person learning. Additionally, we'll share some thoughts related to extending in-person learning time for students, as well as our saga about vaccinations and the surveillance testing we will make available. Our deputy, Mr. Akarios, will start us off.
Can you cue the return to in-person learning presentation? Oh. Thank you, Dr. Tally. Thank you, Board of Education, for allowing us to update you with return to in-person learning. I want to thank all of our students, our staff members, and our parents for, over the last three weeks, that we were able to return back into some in-person learning with our hybrid model. I want to thank everybody for their patience, for following the procedures. I want to thank our teachers who've been trying to meet the needs of both in-person learners and remote learners, and want to thank them for all their efforts with that. Our return-to-school goal was to support a comprehensive educational program for the 2020-21 school year within the current guidelines provided by local, state, federal health and safety officials. Tried to develop a plan, validate the plan, and then monitor and modify. Yes, we've had to do a lot of monitoring and modifying. We have had public health at the center of our framework with instructional corps, SEL, operations, stakeholder communications, and resources surrounding that public health. We are finally all back into Phase 4. Both of our regions are back into Phase 4 and no longer in the tiers of mitigation. Once again, we get most of our guidance from the DuPage County Health Department, and this is the form that we had started using, that we present. As of, we waited quite a bit today to try to get the updated form from the DuPage County Health Department. This was the most recent one, but it was around, I think, 6:30 this evening that they actually posted their new one, which would go through 1:30. It will still show substantial, but the arrows are still pointing in the right directions, which is going down, as we've seen that our transmission rates continue to go down and that we see our cases going down, which are all great signs to see. Just for consistency of metrics, you'll see our most recent for Restore Illinois, basically February 5th. You'll see for Region 8, 5%, 5.3% for Region 7, and the state at 4.40. For our two counties, we're down at 5.7% for Will County and 4.8% for DuPage County. Just showing at the CDC, our cases per 100,000 are still in the higher end, but our transmission rates are much lower in a lower risk of transmission in schools. The revised metrics that we have been using, which was just our guidance on whether we would pause in-person learning, was connected to the substantial from the health, the local DuPage County Health Department. We know under substantial, they've been recommending 100% remote learning, but are leaving that option up to the school districts, which is why, even though it's substantial, that we've moved into hybrid learning. Weekly count, case counts continue to go down, but we look at that at 100,000. We've also, more recently, started looking at the Northwestern University data. I should say, using that data. We've been studying it for quite some time. But using that data as another guiding tool, that gives us more up-to-date information, and we use the seven zip codes as part of our school district. Uh, for tier, I won't go into the tiers of mitigation. So for our most recent information, it's still, and we do have a dashboard on our website, it's still, it's substantial, but as you can see, our case trends continue to go down from 286 to 232 to 168. Our, when we look at the seven zip codes that make up our school district, we see that that is down to 3.28% as of February 7th. The DuPage County positivity rate as, was 4.8%. And then for our supplemental metrics, outbreaks which cannot be contained or mitigated by the COVID-19 contact tracing team, we feel like we're still in good shape there. The inability of the COVID-19 contact tracing team to respond to a significant surge in the number of cases in the district. I believe our dashboard shows that over the last two weeks, we've had 24 positive cases in the district. I believe across eight different schools, but a higher number at our high schools. I think 18 of our 24 cases were at our high schools. And then, are we in good shape with PPE? Yes. And adequate staff available to teach classes and run schools and offices? Yes. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Akarius. And so, we, over the past two weeks, we've have completely phased in our in-person learning program. High school students have been back for two full weeks. All of our elementary students have now been back for two full weeks, with students in grades pre-K to 2 being back for the first week, for, for three weeks. All of our middle school students have been back for one, for one week, with sixth-grade students being back for two weeks. The return has occurred relatively smoothly in all grade levels. The note you see here was written by a student, given to his teacher as he was leaving. It was written by a middle school student, and it reflects an admiration of our teachers and staff that is shared by many. Next slide. What you see here are quotes that have been given by students or parents at the middle and high school. Our staff continues to hear positive comments from parents and students. These two comments just reflect what has been said over the past couple of weeks. I do want to be clear that even with the smooth opening, we continue to tweak our practices to ensure that our in-person learning and remote learning programs are working well. Our staff continue to see that they can do different, what they can do differently and better to enhance the learning. Zooming and rooming is not something one takes too naturally, but our staff are reflective educators examining what is working and what needs to be modified. I have seen firsthand the lengths at which our staff are taking their teaching practices to new levels. From the string teacher that I saw at a school who had four students in front of her, the Zoom students on her smartboard while she was playing chords on the piano, encouraging the students while they played. This teacher was careening her neck to see the students behind her on the school, on the screen while she was playing the chords, and also looking at the students in front of her. The energy, the dedication to all of the students was admirable. Next slide, please. For our last few presentations, we took this slide out because we felt that our self-certification, people were following the rules and understood that they should stay home when symptomatic. As Mr. Akarius mentioned, we have seen a drop in our positivity cases, but this is not the time for us to become lax in following the procedures. Unfortunately, recently, we have had a series of cases where people are not following the rules and guidance. I'm bringing this up now because we want the schools to be open. We want the children to be able to come to school, and we want athletics to happen, now that the Illinois High School Association has said sports can happen. We have had to quarantine a portion of a team at one of our schools because a student was exposed to COVID-19 and came to practice. In another situation, 24 students are quarantined due to a positive case on another sports team. I know that you want your children to be engaged and involved. However, exposing others when they know, when you know that you are sick will only cause issues for others and our ability to keep the system open. If you know you are sick, if you are waiting for a test result because you thought you had been exposed, do not come to school. Do not come to a practice. If you know you should get a COVID test, please do so. Not getting tested when one should to avoid isolation is directly placing others in harm's way. Self-certification is mandatory for all students and staff prior to coming onto campus. We must all be part of the solution. Follow the procedures. Next steps. So what is our plan for increasing days of in-person enrollment for those who are coming in for learning? We have talked about this before, but I will provide some additional details. Now that we have have all of our students starting with in-person, schools are examining their enrollments. And the reason for that is, some people who signed up for in-person did not send their children, and some families wanting in-person did not sign up in time, and now are beginning, are being allowed to start in-person. One might think that these numbers are quick and simple, but they're not. At the high school level, they have to go period by period across more than 200 courses. Elementary is a little easier, and middle school is well right in the middle. We are, we are expanding in-person learning time for some of our self-contained special education students. High schools are expanding time for students who have had some academic issues. Our elementary principals have looked and are looking carefully at the possibility of expanding to four half-days a week by examining all 432 classes. As part of their review, they are looking at the possibility of having to change teachers. They have talked with transportation about creating an afternoon bus for some schools to make that a possibility. They are looking at what impact zooming and rooming will do. All of these are the things that they have been doing and continue to examine. At the middle and high school level, they are looking to increase time for students needing additional academic support, and as mentioned, for students receiving special ed. They are also looking closely to see if numbers are right at any grade level that will allow the students in that grade level to come in for more days by combining Groups A and B. We will be looking this week at numbers at the middle school and high school level to determine what happens if and when we combine Groups A and B, to see how many classes are above the class-sized limits. At the high school level, we can put about 12, 13, maybe 14 in a classroom. And if we combine Groups A and B, we have to see how many students would be, if you will, left on the outside of that classroom. Then we have to determine where would we have those students go in the building. And so that is what is being gathered this week, so we have this information, and then we can make a determination about can we combine these classrooms to allow the kids to come four days a week. Our goal is to let you know by the next Board of Ed meeting where we can go, if anywhere, with adding additional time of in-person learning. I will say, based upon the information, we know, one of the things that we are not doing is relaxing the six feet of social distancing. I'm on a call with other DuPage superintendents. It's about 13 of us who are on that call once a week, and none of them are reducing that six feet of social distancing in their program, and they continue with the hybrid program that they have similar to what we have here in Indian Prairie. Next slide, please. Thanks to the work of Dr. Cipio, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, and Mr. Charles Spandell, Executive Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation, we are able to start the process of voluntary surveillance testing. Starting this week, students in our STEPS program will be able to start the surveillance testing. The surveillance testing allows us to check for antibodies and to see if someone may ha, may, might be positive for COVID, and we are phasing that in over the next three weeks. Starting this week, students in our STEP program will be able to start the testing, and then next week, all special ed teachers working with students in person will be able to have access to the testing. And finally, the week of February 22nd, all staff and students in grade 6 to 12 who are in-person will have access. This is a screening cycle that runs three weeks. Information is going to go out to the community about the tests, and our communication department has created a video to help people understand the process. Vaccinations. The process of getting vaccinations for our staff has been one of the most bizarre and convoluted processes that I have known. Many of the superintendents in the area have referred to it as being similar to the Hunger Games. We were very fortunate to be one of the first districts to get any staff vaccinated when Dr. Henry from Gil Osco in Will County was able to get our 1A staff vaccinated. Those would be our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, speech pathologists, and nurses. We had more than 300 staff vaccinated at his clinic on January 20th. Dr. Henry was willing to come back on February 3rd. We were prepared to have that clinic, where we were going to vaccinate more than 400 1B staff, and that would include any of our educators. Unfortunately, the Illinois Department of Public Health canceled that clinic. It seemed they thought we were not a K-12 program, but an institution of higher learning. At 6:07 PM on the day of the proposed clinic, they sent an email granting us the right to have that clinic. By that time, it was too late. Thanks to the work of Jay Strang, our Chief Business Officer, and Ms. Sarah Mendoza, we were able to get Mariano's online as one of our partners to do the vaccinations. Unfortunately, they have not been given enough vaccines to come out to our schools. We were planning to do vaccines at six of our schools with staff going there. Though Mariano's is ready to vaccinate, they have not been able to come out. I am happy that Edward Elmhurst is working with us and recently allowed staff to provide the hospital with their information, so that the hospital can start setting up appointments. On Friday, I called Meyer Pharmacy Manager to see if they will partner with us. They've reached back to me today. It sounds promising, and I hopefully will see what happens, and when they call me back again later. There are several of us who are dealing with vaccinations almost on a daily basis. Ms. Linda Herwalt, our coordinating nurse, Ms. Mendoza, Mr. Strang, as I mentioned, and I have all want this to happen sooner than later. The issue relates to the inconsistency of supply coming from the state. Our commitment is to see this through. We continue to focus on our portrait of a graduate, social-emotional learning, and we are 204, and we'll open it up for questions from the board.
Questions, comments?
So, um, when you look at the data for the students that have signed up to come in, it, it does widely vary, right? So, for example, an elementary class might have four children coming in, and we also have classes that have 24 children coming in. So, what would the plan be if you had a class that had 24 students sign up for hybrid?
Yeah, so, and I was trying to pull up my numbers right now, but you're, you're exactly right. We have some classrooms that, in a class of 30 children, 24 have signed up to come in for hybrid. And so, we can only put 12, maybe 13 students in a room, so that's why we have an A and a B with that particular classroom. In order for us to have them come four times a week, we would have to either make changes in some of the teachers, hire a teacher to be just the remote teacher, and so therefore, the in-person children might find that they'd have a new teacher, or the remote students might find that they would have a new teacher. We would have a bus. We've already looked at having a bus to make a second, a second bus run in those buildings. And we're even looking at, how do we, in other classrooms, how can we move the children from, let's say, a classroom that is going to have 15 kids? Put them maybe in the gym, or on the stage as an, as a, as a place for them. So all of that is being examined right now, as we look at, can we make this occur? But it is possible we may have to move children from the teacher that they have now to another teacher in order to make that happen.
And we're still trying to be consistent across schools with our behavior. So you wouldn't say, this school had a low sign-up, so let's combine the A, you know, the A group and the B group together, because there's so few people coming in, where another school had the 24 situation, so they have to stay with an A and a B schedule. You're trying to make it consistent across the schools.
That is correct, because what you could even have is not just across the district where you would have inconsistency of programming. You would have it within a school. So it is possible that you could have a, I'm going to make this up, a first-grade class at School A, which is, the kids are coming four days a week, which, but within that same school, the fourth graders are only able to come two days a week because of the numbers that are there. So we want it to be consistent, that everyone would be able to come four days a week.
Right, and just to repeat, we're staying with the six-foot guidance that the superintendents in DuPage are also following.
At the high school level, when we had the meeting on Friday, and this Friday, I happened to miss it because I was double-booked, Mr. Akarius was there. Do you want to speak about that?
Yeah, they, they all were consistent with following DuPage County Health Department's recommendation of six feet of social distancing. They were all staying consistent with that for all the school districts that were on the call.
Ms. Peal?
I, I was thinking it, it might be interesting to explain the reason why we did phasing in. I think it speaks to the complexity of opening the schools, so if you could give me a little bit of, some of the thought process behind it, and the, some of the actual foot, feet on the ground, what is happening that we want to do these phase approaches?
Could, can you ask that one more time, Board Member Peal? I apologize.
It's okay. Maybe I need to go in here. I just want a explanation of the reason for phasing in, the process of having the children coming in, back into our schools, why that was put in place, instead of just everybody come on in all at the same time.
Well, I mean, there's a, several reasons of why we're in the hybrid model, if that's what you're asking. One of it is to try to accommodate the number of students. We do have higher class sizes than, a lot of higher starting class sizes than a lot of school districts. We also find ourselves in a situation where our classroom capacity is a challenge. We've talked to some districts that are bringing in more students on a regular basis, and their starting class sizes are 21, and they can fit 18 with six feet of distance in their classrooms. So that was part of our challenge. When we looked at how some of these models were developed, we know that we have students that we're trying to provide education to whose families would like them to be in-person, while at the same time, we have families that have chosen remote to be the model for their child. And so we're trying to be equitable in how much time we're providing students. And so that's why we were phasing that in. We also wanted, you know, students, staff, everybody to get used to the processes and procedures. So, I mean, there's a lot of reasons for the way we started that we did. I, I hope I answered your question.
I will add, and let me just add this as well, with, for example, at the middle school, we brought sixth grade in. They had never been in the sixth grade at all, and so phasing it in with them made a lot of sense. We also brought in K-2, because we knew that those were our youngest students who, our kindergarten students had not been in the building at all. First-grade students had not been in the building since March, when they were kindergarten students. So phasing it in allowed us to ensure that, as Doc, as Mr. Akarius mentioned, the, we had the procedures in place with where the kids would come in, which doors they would be in. I remember I was at one school, and I was escorting all of the first graders to the right door, and then by the time that the third and fifth graders came, it was all running relatively smoothly in the process. So, it was extremely beneficial to do a phase in, and I think that's the reason why we saw the success we did across all of the grade levels.
Yeah, we did start that first week with the K through 2, and we did have some challenges technology-wise with some self-certification, but that was also the week that we had finals going on for high school, and didn't think that that would be the best week to transition students, so we did see that. We're also, we've emphasized the importance of numbers. We're also, we've emphasized the importance of numbers, especially with our middle school and high school, and how that can change depending on the number of periods. So, we also saw that throughout this time, once we received numbers and how many students were coming in, we had families new to the district who were choosing different models, either remote or hybrid, and we were trying to make sure that our numbers could manage that. So, those are all things that we're trying to work through at this time as well.
Thank you. I think it's just important for folks to understand it's frustrating to be a parent at home and teaching your own child or trying to get them to do things. I get that. I never would have chosen homeschooling myself, but the complexity of carefully bringing in our students and keeping the health and the safety of everyone who is in that school as their number-one priority, because we don't have a choice. This isn't an individual risk-taking that I can take or Dr. Telly can take. It is a risk for the entire community, and that is our mindset. That's why public health is at the center of our framework, and it continues to be. But this is a complex starting of a school system, and we cannot just pivot as quickly as people would like. I had another question.
I need an order, please.
I had another question. I want to, Dr. Telly, if you could, speak to the contact tracing. I've heard things out there that maybe we're not doing it, but we are, correct?
Yeah, so the Health Department does not do our contact tracing. Our nurses, who have been trained through the Johns Hopkins program, are doing the contact tracing. So, whenever there is a positive case, they are calling the, if it's a parent, if it's a child, they'll call the parent to find out who has that child been around, in what way, for how long, so that we can reach out to other families as well. When it's a staff member, we are calling that staff member, and then we find out how many other staff members have been around, what, have they been closer than six feet? Have they been wearing masks? All of that to determine if there's a need to quarantine. Our nurses do a fabulous job. It is only as good as the information they are told by the people who are positive. And sometimes we, there are times when people are not giving the accurate information or refusing to give information.
Okay, but we will plan on continuing that process.
That is correct.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Rising?
I was going to ask Doug a question on the social distancing and the six-foot thing, but anybody who's got a brain can figure out that if you have kids, as the CDC and IDPH and DuPage County Health Department said, that if you have a kid that tests positive and there's kids within that six-foot distancing, now you just don't have to quarantine that kid. You have to quarantine all the kids around him that are within that six-foot distancing. So, and if a kid's going to four classes a day, you can see how that exponentially increases, and then you have half your school within a certain time in self-quarantine. Yes, I have kids in our district. I've had kids in our district for 19 years, and I still do. Here's what I know. Our community is split. The remote students and families want to keep their kids safe, and they want to ensure that they have equitable learning for their students. Our teachers and staff want to make sure they are safe as the students are safe and give all their students a good education. Our in-person students, of which I am a parent of an in-person student, want to make sure and get our kids and have that choice to be back in school, and our kids are getting a good education as well. Here's the thing, as a school board member, I don't make decisions on where I'm at on the issue. I make decisions based on taking our whole school community in mind. I appreciate those that are concerned about COVID as much as I appreciate those that don't perceive COVID to be as big of a worry. I'm also concerned about students that are struggling academically, and even more concerned about students who are socially, emotionally struggling. That doesn't mean I'm willing to put students and staff members at risk. There is no benefit for me as a volunteer school board member to keep kids out of school other than safety. I'm not a medical expert, but I will follow the medical guidelines. I appreciate those asking the board administration when we are going to increase our learning. We've shared with the community from the beginning, this is fluid. We had plans back in the summer and the fall. We had to make changes, and we got contempt from the community that we had to make those changes. We said this was going to be fluid. What we won't do as a district is make promises we can't fulfill. 204 has consistently been a leader in many areas in my tenures on the board. We've also been an observer and have not always been the first to act, but have developed a plan that's right for our districts and our students. This is a scenario of the latter, where we do things that work for our district in a safe and financially, fiscally as responsible as possible. In this scenario, we won't rush to judgment or actions, but will continue to progress forward. This board has said from the beginning, they valued all community opinions. We read every single one of them, and trust me, there's been about close to 15,000 of them. There are various opinions and perceptions on this subject. Some of those opinions and perceptions are stronger than others, and some people are more angry than others. As I personally said from the beginning, actually what all of us have said from the beginning, is we want our students back as much as possible. Even with students back, we continue to want students back more frequently with safety as our top priority. We all have different opinions on what safety means. As Randy mentioned earlier, you're right. I don't live by fear, but that's not to mean that I can't judge somebody for their level of fear. That's what a school board member does with their community and with their administration. Our district and our board and our administration will do so in a timeline that works safely and financially for us. It's not a guarantee, and chances are, the decisions we make, no one's going to like. This board administration have read all your comments, and we continue to read them and value each and every one of them, and we know, no matter what decisions we make, people aren't still going to be happy. This is a consistently moving situation, and we have to make it work for our district. Our promise, as it always has been, is to continue to listen and move forward in a safe manner. Thanks, Mike.
Ms. Demming?
Thank you, President Razak. Dr. Tally and Mr. Karius, thank you so much for the updates, and thank you for sharing the information regarding the consideration on the elementary school. Doug, I just had some questions and thoughts on the high school levels. You know, our challenges certainly surround a lot of what our classroom sizes are and then the number of students that come into our classroom. At the high school level, do, are there any, do we see any considerations, any thought process on anything that we're going to be able to do for that level as far as increased amounts of time?
Yeah, the principals are looking at opportunities there as well with Mr. Hillman working with those levels. They're trying to look at, what are your total? One of the challenges at the high school is looking, I think Dr. Tally was trying to explain this, you know, you're looking at how many students maybe in this teacher's A and B first paired, and if you combine them. And so, if you have 18 combined, and you might be able to fit 14 in the classroom with six feet of distancing, then you're looking at, well, I have four other students. What can I do to meet those students' needs? Or do I have a different location in the building, you know, where they might, you know, zoom into the classroom, which is not something we really want them to do? But then you're looking, okay, at the next period, how many would we have if we combined those students? So, we are looking across the board at opportunities for that, and then looking at, what does their day look like? You know, they might be in the school, but does that mean they're going to be in the classroom with the teacher, you know, if we're maintaining social distancing and having that? Or what do we need to do to meet the needs of those students in there? So, we are trying to explore those different situations. Is it much more complicated at middle school and high school? Yes, just because they switch from class to class to class, which is our other challenge. You know, when we talk about quarantining and if you're less than six feet, and the, like, we've been very, we have been fortunate for our positive cases that have occurred during the school day in our classes, that we haven't had many quarantines with those because of the six feet of social distancing, so we haven't had other individuals within. Where we've seen higher amounts of quarantine have been with our athletics, which makes sense. It is harder to maintain that social distance during athletics, and so that's where we've seen a little bit more of our contact tracing happening because we're maintaining the six feet at those levels. So, we are exploring it. There is obviously different challenges associated with that, but that's, we are going through that process.
Yeah, one of the things that I would just like to reiterate, and it's been said a couple of times, is how important it is for each of us, each individually, and our families and our students, to take that responsibility really carefully so that we can mitigate the opportunity to have this spread happen, because it impacts so many more, and if we are not doing what we should as far as exemplified on the athletic side. Can you share a little bit, I've heard different personnel speak about the high school situation regarding lunch. Can you share a little bit of what that looks like for us and what our students are being asked and what they're supposed to follow, please?
Mr. Hillman, do you have any information on that?
Is Mr. Hillman here?
Yeah.
Thanks, Brett. I'm not sure, did you hear the question?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe you're asking about the fact that we had to keep a lunch period inside of a student's schedule. We were not able to remove the lunch period out of every student's schedule at the middle school and high school because that creates a gap. So, therefore, we do have to have those during the school day. Because of the way that they are structured at the high school level, some of our students are able to go home early if their lunch period is the last period that they have, or they are able to come in late if it is the first period within the day. Otherwise, if they are there, because they have a class before and a class after their lunch period, we do have to provide an opportunity for them to get homework done, to get assistance with teachers. So, we have done a lot of creative things at both the middle school and the high school to help our students who are either struggling or do need extra intervention or time. But it is a difficult challenge for us simply because of space. When we plan for a lunch period, we put all of the students historically in a very large, open-air, open environment, and we never have to worry about having a classroom for them. But now, because we do have many kids who are in, we can't necessarily use the lunchroom that was designed to hold lunch, so we do have them in alternative learning spaces, and they sometimes probably have a little, probably not the access to their teachers that they would like or we would like them to have. But it is something that all of our building principals are working through and continue to try to problem-solver out.
I appreciate that.
Did I answer the question?
You did, and I think it's, you know, the importance there is that we're trying to ensure that they have the opportunity to get the classes, to continue the classes that they need to, and unfortunately, some of them may not be able to have that lunch period at the beginning or at the end, and therefore, they do have to be there because they have that lunch in the middle. So, we're trying to make the best accommodations, and as you indicated, we're trying to continuously look at seeing what we can do in order for them to have that access to teachers, if possible, during that timeframe. Is that correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Grover?
Hi, I just have one question. Some parents had mentioned that students who go to class, their teacher is sometimes remote. Is there another teacher in the classroom at the time? Could you speak to that?
It might not be a teacher. There's another school employee who's in the classroom, and then the teacher might be zooming into the classroom for instruction. I know that our principals in schools had reached out to families to let them know if they had a teacher who, for accommodations, could not. This was a long process worked through with the school district and with human resources, and it wasn't just purely a choice to not teach from in the building. So, they worked through the processes, and so that's, we're trying to make sure we have an adult in there. Sometimes it's a principal. Sometimes it might be a teaching assistant, could be a dean's assistant. We have different school employees who might be in there trying to supervise the class while the teacher is zooming into the classroom.
And it's important to remember, these accommodations are required by law. After HR went through, we started with roughly 600 people who had requested, and HR met with each person individually, talked with them about their issue and why they couldn't come in, and then a determination was made for those who could. We don't have 600 now who've got the accommodation. It went down to about 100. And so, this is a requirement that school systems, not just here in, not only our system, but all school systems have to do across the country.
Thank you.
Mr. Carubus?
The most, I'm extremely frustrated. The state hasn't opened up completely. According to the state's plan, the state was supposed to completely open up when a vaccine was widely available. Now, vaccine became available in December, so now we're waiting for it to become widely Public health should have enough shots for everyone that wants one, and they should be using the schools to vaccinate everyone that wants one as soon as possible, as quickly as possible. The responsibility of vaccinating the teacher should not fall on the schools. This responsibility should be the public health departments, but the schools are taking on this responsibility because we understand the importance of getting it done so that we can open fully as soon as possible. Instead of doing that, we have our superintendent who's making calls to local pharmacies, trying to set up a network to administer vaccines in our communities. The state has set us up for failure. We've gotten to the finish line on opening up, and we stall. Instead, we are left with trying to perform some calculus on meeting these rules to figure out, have we met six feet? What's the physical size of our rooms? So, I am extremely frustrated in this whole process that we, as a state, have not been able to completely open up. I am gravely concerned on how long it's going to take for us to be widely vaccinated so that we can open up completely.
The complexity of this boggles my mind, yet it gets for me to be at the simple fact that six feet of distancing makes a difference. I am in constant, and I mean constant, communication with board presidents. Weekly, I meet with the board presidents from St. Charles, Wheaton, Elmhurst, Elgin, Naperville 203, and Barrington 202. Each one of these districts has a different opening plan. The one that's most confounding to me is one district who can meet the needs of their elementary school children four days a week, yet their middle school students, they don't have an A and B hybrid program. They have an A- They have an A, B, and C hybrid program. So like Mr. Carubus, and I'm sure the rest of us, there's a level of frustration that it just doesn't go with us. CDC does say schools can be open safely without the vaccine, yet CDC says you need to follow local mitigation. I'm hoping there's some differentiation between our elementary school children and our older children. Perhaps that will assist us. But again, as I stated, I'm a rundown principal and not an infectious disease doctor, so I continue to follow the guidelines provided to me by DuPage County Mental Health, the CDC, and our legal department. And we don't have a legal department. Can't afford a legal department, which will come later, our legal opinion. Yet, I'm glad to hear what I heard. I want to reinforce, no stone needs to go unturned. We need to try to return our kids to school in a safe manner. So I look forward to hearing within two weeks whether or not we can return more days with our elementary students. We need to continue to work, and I know you are, to try to be as creative as possible. I appreciate what I just heard about the high school. But clearly, there's not going to be perfection. There's going to have to be a give and take because we're in the midst of a pandemic. So let's continue to move to try to get our kids into school. Let's continue to have no stone unturned in order to try to achieve that goal, but we need to do it in a safe manner. Anyone else? Thank you, thank you, Dr. Tally. Thank you, Mr. Akarius. We have one action item, and that's the approval of the gifts and donation report for the first semester of 2020, 2021. I need a motion to approve that report. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the gifts and donations report for semester 2020, 2021, as presented.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I have a comment. I just want to thank everybody. Even during a pandemic, we're supported by our community, whether that's the Naperville Police, whether that's IPPC, whether that's our PTA, whether it's the places of worship throughout the community, tons of community organizations, our Boosters Club, we get health services donations.
Local businesses.
Local businesses.
IPEF.
Keep on going, guys. I started the list. IPEF, there you go.
Parents.
Parents.
Rotary.
Rotary.
Well, you don't really want to leave anyone out.
Forty-three pages of donations, and they're much appreciated. And really, it has benefited, again, I'm most appreciative, it benefits every student, but we clearly have some students who really need additional assistance in order to participate and be given equal opportunity to be successful. And many of these programs give those kids that opportunity to be successful. So I have just a special thank you, and I don't want to go through that list again, but to all who've been with us and helped us to assist our children. Anyone else? I think I have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Jeanne Calderol.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We now move to our second discussion item, which is our budget forecast.
Good evening, board members. This is the first of many forecasts. It's our first financial forecast that takes us into fiscal year '22, and as we've done in the past, we will be looking at not only next year, but the four years following next year. So this is a five-year financial forecast. As is typical, as we move into the spring and we start to get more direction and more, a stronger idea what's happening at Springfield, we'll have a better financial picture as we go into next year and the future years. What we've decided to do today, and Mr. Shipley, the incoming chief school business official will be taking half of the presentation, and I'll be taking half of the presentation. We're going to be sharing the tale of two districts. I know you've seen this before. I think the first time we put this together was about eight years ago. This data has been updated with the 2019 financial data that is available down at the Illinois State Board of Education. The fiscal year '20 audits are completed, but ISB has not loaded their information up on the websites yet. And the reason for this is Naperville 203 is vastly different than we are. There's been a number of questions from the community about why can't we do certain things that 203 does? I've talked to my counterpart over there about what they're doing, and this kind of sets some of the context. Mr. Shipley's going to be talking about our operating funds and property taxes. Will County is doing some things differently with property taxes this year. We'll talk about evidence-based and other state funding. As you know, in the pandemic, the state is in a financial situation that is not good for schools or the state of Illinois. We'll talk about our expenditures, our non-operating funds, and then future activities. And again, this is very high level. As we move into the spring, we'll get down more into the details. As you can see from this graph, Indian Prairie School District, we've got about 82% of our funding coming locally. Naperville has almost 90%. We are 14.6% of revenue from the state. 203 is 8.1. Just over 3% comes from the federal government, and 2% for 203 comes from the federal government. What's important to know about those two pie graphs is that Naperville 203 passes their budget in June before the July 1 fiscal year begins. For as long as I've been doing this job, we pass our budget at the end of September at the last legal opportunity to do that because we are more dependent upon the state of Illinois. And when the state of Illinois fails to fund us or prorates our funding, we have to adjust that in our budget before it's passed in September. If you look at our property values, our equalized assessed valuations, you can see that we have about $4.4 billion in residential. 203 has about 4.1 and some change. We each have some farms. We each have some commercial, pretty even on the commercial. We have slightly more industrial. We have some railroads. In total, we have $5.7 billion in Indian Prairie 204 equalized assessed valuation property that we can tax. And if you look at 203, they have just over $5 billion of property value or equalized assessed valuation. Now, this slide really demonstrates the differences in the two districts. Our average daily attendance is 25,355 students. That is different than our enrollment. Average daily attendance is calculated with your highest three months of students who are actually in seats and attending school. So if you're on vacation or you're home ill, you're not counted in our average daily attendance, and that's a three-year rolling average. So you take your average daily attendance from this year and the last two years. Naperville 203 is 15,087 students, so they're quite a bit smaller than we are. When you take the property values, those EAVs I showed you, based on your average daily attendance, our EAV per pupil is $208,285. That is less than the state average. Naperville 203's is $305,536. So they have more property value per student that they can tax. How does that happen? We have more students, and we are heavily residential, and we are heavily multifamily residential. If we had an Amazon distribution center move in, we would receive taxes from that but wouldn't receive students. Our EAV per pupil has actually grown over the last five years, not because of the housing changes, but because our enrollment has consistently dropped over the last six or seven years by about 200 students a year. So when you think about it, all revenue sources, state, local, and federal, we receive $5,212 per student. They receive $18,995 per student. The operating expenditure per pupil, how much it costs to operate the school on an annual basis, not counting the bonds, the payment of our buildings, to pay for the electric, the teacher salaries, the benefits, the paper, the copy machines, the utilities, $15,699 for 203, $12,641 for Indian Prairie. Now, if you know anything about Indian Prairie School District, we were the fastest-growing school district in the state for a number of years, and we still have seven more years where we have to pay off our bonds. So the difference between that $15,212 and that $12,641 is our bond payment. We're not growing our funds like Naperville 203 is. And if you know anything about Naperville 203, you know that their only bonds are left over from their work on Naperville Central. We have about $176 million worth of bonds to pay off. I think that they're less than $40 million. So that $18,995 per student is in their operating fund. And if the majority of your revenue comes from your local sources, and the majority of your expenditures are salaries and benefits, the only way that you can make things match is to have less staff and pay them less. So on that top, you can see the pupil-to-teacher ratio, 12.5 for Indian Prairie and 9.7 for 203. That is not class size. That is every licensed body in the district, every licensed educator, less administrators. So if you think of all of the folks who are in a school or in a central office that aren't load-bearing, like in front of a classroom, you have special education teachers, LMC directors, nurses, social workers, psychologists, speech and language pathologists, adapted physical education teachers, interventionists. So for every one of our licensed staff, we have 12.5 kids that they're carrying. And in Naperville 203, they have 9.7. On the administrative side, we have 321 students for every administrator, and in Naperville 203, they have 155. You can go into their schools, they have more assistant principals. You can go into their central office, they have more assistant superintendents, more directors, more executive directors. And when you look at that, you can see that administrative expenditures, we spent $4.3 million in all administrative expenditures. Naperville 203 spent $4.6, almost $4.7 million. We spent $170 per pupil on administrative expenditures, they spent 311. Now, part of the reason that they're able to do that is that they're an older school district, they're grown, their bonds are paid off. Part of the reason they're able to do that is because they have less students and almost as much equalized assessed valuation, property to tax. Mr. Carubus, I know that you pay attention to the fund balances, and I know that you pay attention to our capital maintenance, and so these two slides, I think you'll have a particular interest in. When the difference between our $15,000 that we receive and the $12,600 that we spend, and the majority of that difference goes to our bonds, you can see that our ending fund balance on June 30th of every year consistently is around 33%. From 2011 to 2019, you can see that we are consistently around 33%. The state thinks that you're financially healthy if you have 25%. That is not a very strong number. And if you're, Naperville 203 at $18,995, and they're spending $15,699 and don't have bonds to pay off, what happens to their fund balance? It grows. From 2011, it went from 48.1 to 2019, 78%. They're able to do some things with that money, and it has nothing to do with COVID-19, and it has nothing to do with any savings of COVID-19. We are saving in areas, and we are spending in areas. And honestly, we won't know how we really perform until the end of the year. We're tracking it as well as we can. But as programs change and busing patterns change, and we bring more kids back, it's a very fluid model. 203 is able to do some of the things that they're able to do because their fund balances are as high as they are. And those fund balances are a point in time. That is on June 30th, after the second distribution of taxes. That's true for them, and it's true for us. Our low point in time is the last two weeks of May before those taxes arrive. But that is the number that the state of Illinois looks at, June 30th, your last day of your fiscal year. The state of Illinois, for a number of years, has discussed that if you have fund balances of greater than 50%, maybe you're financially strong enough that you don't need any state of Illinois money. And if you're a district that's greater than 50%, there's a number of things that you can do. You can rebate taxes, you can give money back. That's not to say that you're not going to levy the same amount. You're going to levy the same amount so that you can always have your next starting place. But if you rebate it after the levy, it's a one-year give and not a multi-year give. You can give money back in the form of fees. You can shift money from your operating fund into your non-operating fund. These are all ways that you can drop that number if it's strong enough. Now, we're not in the position where we can do that, even though 33% looks like it's pretty strong, because those two weeks in May are a period of time when we're really concerned about how low do we get? And if the state of Illinois fails to pay us a categorical payment, or prorates our evidence-based funding, or there's any type of hiccup, we want to make sure that we can make our payroll and pay our bills. And as board members, you know that during the Great Recession, there was a pretty consistent conversation about our low point in time, and we were talking to our investment specialists about where we would end up as we looked at our cash flow. And you know that districts around us take a tax anticipation warrant out for those two weeks period of time because they can't make it. They go to the bank, and they get a number of bids, and they borrow money for a six- or eight-week period of time, and when the taxes come in, they pay it back. We thankfully have never been in that position. We thankfully have never been in that position. The other way that you can take care of things, and Mr. Carubus, again, this is one that I think you'll have interest in, is how much we're able to take care of our facilities. We've been able to balance our budget, and the first way that we've been able to balance our budget is by really budgeting less in our capital outlay, the repair of our roofs, our masonry, our asphalt, our boilers, our windows, our air conditioning. EMG Facility Services came in about seven years ago and did a full assessment of the entire school district. They said we should be spending, on average, $8.5 million annually to keep our facilities up. Now, there were some years where it was $15 million, and there were some years when it was $5 million. It all depended upon when the life cycle of certain components was going away. Two years ago, we were getting close to that mark. We were spending $6, $7, and $8 million on our facilities. And that was because of the shot of the arm of the evidence-based funding model. Prior to that, 2012, 13, 14, 15, you can see that we were spending much less than that. And when you compare that as a per-pupil expenditure, you can see we spend much less on the care of our facilities than Naperville 203 does. And if you're a homeowner, you know that if you don't address a leaky window, pretty soon that leaky window turns into rotten drywall, turns into the tile on the floor that's tearing up, and the problem just compounds. I share that with you, and I've shared it with the Indian Prairie Parents Council and with the Teachers Association in the past, so that folks can see that we are very different financially than Naperville 203. Thankfully, academically, we score very well with them. We look at our comparable districts, Weyton, St. Charles, Batavia, Geneva, Elmhurst, Bowling Brook, 203. We score very, very well, but we are financially tighter than any one of the other school districts. We will be tighter than all of the school districts till we pay our bonds down in 2027. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Shipley to talk about the forecast.
So with that backdrop, I think we'll see several of those trends and topics kind of reappear as we look forward here, starting with fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2026. First, I do want to point out, this is our operating funds forecast here for the five-year period. And despite those challenges that Jay helped outline, we are presenting a balanced budget for next year and a balanced forecast over the five-year period. If you look at the excess deficit line about halfway down, you'll see in fiscal year 2022, our starting point here is a $461,000 surplus. The average surplus over those five years is about $500,000. And that's with four years positive, and one year we are projecting a slight deficit at this time. The revenues, on average, increase 2.2% each year. As Jay mentioned and will show up in the future slides, the majority of that is our property tax revenue, which is shown as a local source here. Expenditures increase on an average of 2.25% each year. The most significant of our expenditures continue to be salaries and benefits, as shown. I'll just elaborate a little bit more on fund balance here and how we project that going forward. Again, Jay showed we've stayed very consistent in that about 33% range over the past several years, and will continue to be in that range. You know, the low point comes at fiscal year 2026 at 31.25%. A fund balance, so we will be above that 25%, which Jay mentioned is the state goal is outlined in their annual financial report ratings. It's also, 25% is also what's listed in our board goal as well. I'll just translate that into months of cash on hand, which can, you know, fund balance as a percent can be a little abstract, but if we look at months on hand, that comes to about four months of reserves on hand at June 30th. As Jay mentioned, June 30th is a relative high point for us. So translating that back to a low point, which would be about late May, we're projecting low points of about 18% fund balance or about two months. So we do see a significant variance throughout the year, and as Jay mentioned, we're conscious of managing to that low point, really more so than we're managing to the point at June Real quickly, here's just the chart showing revenues by source on average for the five years. This is pretty consistent with what Jay showed as historical data. Again, 78% of our revenue comes through property taxes. This reliance on property taxes is what drives differences and inequities across all districts in Illinois. Just to compare these numbers to the state averages, on average, State of Illinois school districts rely on property taxes for 60% of their revenue. That's the highest percentage out of all 50 states in the country. Our next highest revenue source is the evidence-based funding at 11%. On average, State of Illinois districts receive 22% of their revenue through evidence-based funding. So we are receiving, on average, less state aid than the majority of State of Illinois districts. The remaining revenue sources include other state funding at 3%, other local funds of 5%, and then federal aid of 3%. It's important to note, we will talk a little bit later about the CARES Act and potential funding under the FEMA grants and some other federal sources. However, in the big picture, federal funding continues to be a very small part of our Here, we're showing our projected property tax rates. So if we continue to meet our forecasted property tax revenue, this is what our property tax rates would look like, both over the next five years and with the historical data for comparison. As a reminder, property tax rates are impacted really by two factors, the Consumer Price Index, and then the increase in our property tax values, our EAV. Jay was showing earlier how our EAV compares with District 203. In general, if EAV is larger, then your property tax rate's going to be lower. And as you go year over year, if property tax values can increase greater than the Consumer Price Index, you will see a rate decrease. So we are fortunate that since the end of the Great Recession, you could see, starting in 2015, we have gradually seen a decrease in our property tax rates, and we project that going forward. Consumer Price Index in 2019 was 2.3%. That's what we used when we passed the 2020 levy in December. The 2020 Consumer Price Index was 1.4%. That is what is factored into that 2021 projected number. And then the remaining years in this forecast, we're using 2%, which is the Federal Reserve's stated target for inflation going forward. This compares to the EAV growth of 3.8% in the most recent year and projected EAV growth of 3%. So if we are able to hit that EAV target, and even with the COVID-19 pandemic, we have seen a strong property values throughout the district, and our values have been resilient. So we're hopeful that we can continue to see that tax rate decrease. Jay did point out the debt service portion of both our revenues and expenditures. That's shown here on the red box as part of this. It's roughly 9% of our total levy. You'll see in 2025, that is actually the last year we will levy for property taxes in order to pay off the bonds over the next year after that. So that's why that number of the debt service goes down to 0.22% in that year. The year that didn't quite make the slide is the next year where that number's zero. And as Jay mentioned, at that point, we'll be in a position to potentially have some combination of property tax relief for our taxpayers, or possibly look to use those funds or use that additional property tax levy towards operations. Next, as Jay mentioned earlier, as a district, we are still reliant on state funding, and the district will continue to be negatively impacted by the state's financial condition. As you know, the Fair Tax Funding Bill did not, or Constitutional Amendment, did not pass in November. That was something held forth by the state as an opportunity to potentially fund education more. I guess we'll never know how that would have panned out. But that did not pass, and currently, as of today, I just checked this, the State of Illinois has a backlog of $5.6 billion in bills, and that's in addition to $4.3 billion of short-term borrowing that has been taken out. So almost $10 billion of past due bills or lines of credit that are going to need to be paid off in the near future. The State of Illinois budget in total, I believe, is about $20 billion. So that just gives a little bit of flavor of the financial stress that the state's been in, and I think has been in for a long time, and the COVID-19 pandemic has only accelerated that. So with that background, as part of this forecast, we think it's prudent to not project any increase in our state evidence-based funding for fiscal years 2022 and 2023. We are projecting small increases in the final two years of this forecast. We're also anticipating delays in when we receive the categorical payments, the other main source of state funding, and we're not projecting any increases in those categoricals as a result of the state funding situation. So this graph gives about a 12-year, both history and going forward, of our state aid. And so hopefully, this shows graphically where we're at. As Jay mentioned, we did switch over in state funding models about three or four years ago. The previous model was known as general state aid, and the new model is known as evidence-based funding. You can see in our first year of that shift, we did see an increase in state funding. And when we were here about this time last year or the year before, we were discussing with the board what we projected that increase to be going forward, and in some ways, we were debating whether or not that increase was enough or sufficient, or going to continue to grow at a rate that would allow us to implement different educational elements that are outlined in that formula. Unfortunately, obviously, with the pandemic, things have changed. Again, a bad situation has gotten even worse. And so again, we're kind of back to projecting flat state funding, again, maybe even a little bit of a decrease from where we are, where in 2019 and 2020. As mentioned, the district has been able to take advantage of some federal relief funds. The first act I'll cover is the CARES Act. We received a $1.1 million allotment of the first round of CARES Act, and that's gone towards this current year, fiscal year 2021. To date, we've received about $940,000 of that grant. Recently, with the passing of the additional stimulus in December, the district is now slated to receive about $2.7 or $2.8 million in additional CARES funds. We're still waiting for some of the final paperwork to come through on that number. We're expecting that to start impacting the district primarily next fiscal year, so fiscal year 2022 is where the full amount of that revenue and expenses include in this budget. We've primarily used those funds for supplemental programming and other instructional needs. So that included some summer support during this past summer, different supplemental materials that have been sent home for students either during the summer or during the school year. We've seen an increase in our need for licenses and other software programs, and that's been supported by this grant. We have funded some additional nursing positions and used this grant to fund our contact tracing. And we have funded a small amount of PPE with the CARES Act funds. But again, our primary focus with that has been on our educational programming. I will touch briefly on some FEMA grant funding. This grant, I'll be honest, continues to go back and forth on what's going to be available to us. Originally, we were told that we would receive a significant amount of FEMA grant funding. That changed in September. They pulled schools almost exclusively out of the FEMA grant program. But with the new administration in Washington, over the past week or two, they have reversed that decision, and we're optimistic we'll be able to receive at least several hundred thousand dollars of FEMA grant funding. That funding will primarily go to things like PPE, nursing supplies, building signage, and things maybe more directly related with helping to stop the spread of COVID-19 in You know, our focus in preparing the forecast is primarily on the revenue side, and then we start really digging into the expenditures as we start getting further along in the process and talking about our budget. So I'll just spend a few brief minutes here on operating expenditures. Again, consistent with prior years, the majority of our expenditures relate to our people. That's salaries at 63% and employee benefits at 14%. Of the remaining 23%, the next largest is our outsourced services. That includes custodial, bus driving, and our food service staff. Within that, those vendors are primarily relying on their people as well. So a reminder to the board and our community that we continue to put an overwhelming majority of our resources directly into the people and the professional staff that educate our students and support our students in our buildings. The key assumptions that we're building this forecast with on the expenditure side are listed here. First is the salaries, which are aligned to our collective bargaining agreements. And secondly, when we talk about our people plan, we are reducing staffing levels in alignment with projected enrollment decreases throughout the forecast. This will be a challenge for us, and unfortunately, this is a change from how we've handled the last several years, where even though we've seen a decrease in enrollment, we've been able to keep our staffing levels flat. As Jay mentioned, the district's seen about a 200-student decrease per year over the past several years, and I'll just go in total here, starting with 2013, so that was about seven years ago. We've seen a decrease of about 1,800 students from that peak, but during that time, we've been able to increase our total staff, our full-time equivalents, by 150, with 45 of that being teachers and the remaining 100 being primarily other support staff in our buildings. So I know we're all continuing to struggle with high class sizes, and I know we would have liked to have been able to address that even more over the past several years, but we have managed to make some inroads in that area over the past several years, where it does look like that'll be a challenge to do that going forward. Another expenditure challenge we continue to deal with is the minimum wage. The minimum wage has gone up to $11 as of January 1st, 2021, and is scheduled to go to $15 by January 1st of 2025. We do have several positions in the district which make minimum wage currently, and by the time we hit that $15, that does impact a significant portion of our teaching assistance and other support-level positions. We are fortunate that we've been able to take advantage of some health savings in this forecast. As the board knows, we switched our health service provider or insurance provider as of January 1st of 2021. We're anticipating $4.2 million in savings as a result of that switch, and that's with minimal disruption to the plan. That's primarily a result of reduced administrative costs as a result of going with the new provider.
Mr. Shipley, can I just point out that we went with a new administrator? We're a self-funded plan. So we still have the same plan, and we are still funding it, but we went with United Healthcare, other than Blue Cross Blue Shield.
The next area I'll just cover is those outsourced service contracts I mentioned earlier, which make up about 11% of our budget. We are anticipating slight increases in that area as a result of the contracts we have with those providers. And the final point I'll point out, which does go back to a comment Jay made earlier, when we look at our capital funding and how much we've been able to put in our buildings, unfortunately, we're not projecting to be able to spend any capital expenditures through our operating funds as part of this forecast. We'll be relying exclusively on our Capital Projects Fund to fund those needs. So with that, I will pivot briefly into our non-operating forecast. So this is the Bond and Interest and Capital Projects Fund. Pretty consistent level of funding for this fund, and that's property taxes that are dedicated exclusively for the payment of our bonds. And you can see that's approximately $26 to $28 million each year throughout this forecast. The expenditures then are substantially all those debt service payments, with $3 million each year spent on capital projects. You'll see, as a result, the fund balance in our non-operating funds gradually decreases throughout this period. $3 million for capital, as I think we've covered before, is really the bare minimum that we would need to address any projects as they come due. It does increase our deferred maintenance, and it potentially will create challenges for us in the future. But at this time, that's what we believe is the prudent amount to spend in order to make sure we can make these capital dollars last and, you know, potentially have some money if there was any emergency contingency or significant capital need in our district. if there was any emergency contingency or significant capital need in our district. Finally tonight, I'd just like to cover the current year. Again, Jay hinted earlier that we do continue to track our actual versus budget very closely. When the board passed the budget back in September, we were clear that we felt the budget would support us regardless of what learning environment we were in during the year. At the time, we were hoping to transition to hybrid a little earlier than we actually did, as the board knows. But we are confident that we are seeing some savings in the current year as a result of being in remote learning, that additional month or six-week period. The savings are a result of primarily reduced salaries and benefits. That relates to our less use of teaching assistants, substitutes, crossing guard, and lunchroom staff that traditionally are in our buildings, as well as some savings in transportation. I know our transportation savings maybe is a little less than maybe would be expected, but I will point out our transportation team has really stepped up and served our buildings in a wide variety of areas during this time. And so we have been getting value for those transportation dollars that are still being spent, even when we haven't had a full building in session. Those savings are on the expenditure side. I will point out that, as Jay mentioned, we really do wait maybe a little later than other districts because there is the potential that those savings are offset by changes at the state level, delays in state's payments or prorations of state payments. And our team will be continuing to monitor that and identifying if we believe if there are delays, if those are temporary delays, where we can still be confident we will get the money eventually, or if those are permanent delays, where maybe we have to look at cutting expenditures as a result of those. Our team has been working with instructional services and leadership to identify uses of these funds if and when savings are realized. And I will point out, one of those uses that we've already identified and started with, as we presented during the COVID-19 update earlier, has been the screenings at our schools, the voluntary testing. That is one of the areas that's being funded by these budget savings. So I'll just close with what our next steps are as we continue to develop a budget for next school year. We continue to monitor all the assumptions and areas we covered during tonight's presentation. One area that has changed and has changed in the last week or two, and I'll be honest, we didn't see this coming, is the change in the property tax collection process within Will County. When we covered fund balances earlier, we did mention that traditionally, we receive a large fund balance, property tax installment in June, and that helps create a scenario where we hit that 33% fund balance percentage at June 30. That's based on the counties requiring their taxpayers to pay 50% of their tax installment by June 1. Will County, at their most recent meeting, passed a revised payment schedule so that Will County taxpayers will now make their payments over four installments. As a result, we will receive a significant portion of Will County property taxes 60 to 90 days later than we normally do. We're monitoring this. We don't think that this'll create a situation where we have to explore short-term borrowing, as Jay mentioned earlier. It may create some disruption to our budget process and how we maybe compare fiscal years, if we end up short in one fiscal year but in excess in another. But we're continuing to monitor that, and we'll update the board how that impacts our planning for next year. We're not aware of any changes to DuPage County, but, you know, we do know that these sort of policies, sometimes, once one county adopts it, they become adopted by several in the area. We will continue to monitor state funding and the state legislative session, which has just started. As mentioned, we are continuing to work with our leadership team to identify opportunities for investments of any potential savings. That could be opportunities this school year. That could be opportunities over the summer. That could be opportunities next school year or into the future. We are, I think, open to exploring any options that are going to best serve our students and our community. With that said, as Jay mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we will start continuing to update the board, and we will be presenting tentative budgets here, starting early in the spring. And with that, Jay and I are available for any questions.
Questions, comments, Ms. Demming?
So I have a couple, I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments. Since we're on slide 18, just real quickly. Matthew, is that the Will County, is that immediately or is that FY '22? Their taxpayers?
That is for this tax cycle. So a Will County taxpayer who traditionally would pay a 50% installment on June 1, 2021 will now pay a 25% installment on June 1 and a 25% installment on August 3.
Okay, I just wondered whether they're doing immediately or FY '22. As you, on slide 14, as we talk about, you showed how the amount of our salary percentage. And I just wanted to reference that, but really go back to slides four and let's see, slides three and four. As we talk about, as we look at our revenues and our operating expenses, we value our staff so well once we have them. And so we do see a large portion of our operating expenses going to our salaries. But just showing again, and it's just so important because there certainly have been some questions regarding what we can do versus what some other districts have been able to do. And just sort of the reminder, as Jay pointed out, of what our expenses per pupil are. And even though we see our revenue per pupil, when we look at our total, oh gosh, I can't remember which slide it was. But I just wanted to point out the fact that we certainly have a larger number of students per administrators, that we really, we value our, you know, we value making sure that we pay attention to not overstaffing, but making sure that administratively, we have what we need, but not overstaffing. Jay, was there a comment that you wanted to make?
No, I just want to say that you're absolutely right. And there was a period of time when I was able to contact the Illinois School Report Card at Northern Illinois University, where they collected all of that data. And for a number of years, we were 9, 10, 11, 12 highest student-to-administrator ratio in the state of Illinois, much higher than the collar counties or comparable districts. But across the entire state, there was only a dozen or so districts that had a higher student ratio to administrator. Those were downstate districts and central Illinois districts, where it might be 400 students in the school district, and there was a principal slash superintendent in that. None of those were in the collar counties or comparable districts to Indian Prairie.
And so just again, as Jay alluded to the fact that we really keep our expenditures down per pupil, but we continue to see our academic success be extremely high in relation to our comparable schools. I think it was Jay. On slide seven, where you shared what our, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to. You shared what our per-pupil maintenance was, outlay was. What overall we try and really get from an operation standpoint? What are we spending overall versus, I think, do we want to get to, is it suggested that it's 12 million that we spend a year? And what are we spending?
The facilities assessment that we had done said that we should be spending 8.5 on average. Prior to evidence-based funding, our average that we were spending was 3.5 million. Both this year and next year, we are budgeting 3 million for our capital projects. So we're falling behind that number. For the three years that evidence-based funding was moving, and there was new money for evidence-based funding prior to the pandemic and the recession associated with that, we started to build on that. We were spending 6.5, and in one year, we spent almost $9 million in our capital. And we were really starting to work toward paying off some of our projects that were deferred and were 8, 9, 10, a dozen years old. Unfortunately, now, in the forecast, what we're moving back to is a place where we're probably going to start deferring some maintenance again.
But we certainly, if something is dire, we take care, I mean, we'll be able to take care of it, okay. The last question, the last question that I had. As we get to FY '27, 2027, you showed that our fund balance for 2026 would be at 31.25. Do we have an estimation of what, by the time we get to 2027, what it would look like?
No, we, the model only allows us to go out to a five-year forecast. And honestly, historically, I've always done a five-year forecast for the first board meeting, talking about planning for the future years. And then I reduce that down to a three-year financial forecast. And the reason for that is you're really starting to read some really muddy water about what's going on in 2024 and 2025, and what's happening with the state, and what's happening with, you know, the community and taxes and development. So it's a, the further you go out, the less clear the picture is. But on the other hand, any changes that you make in 2022 and 2023 that are minor changes are compounded on the years out. So if you do something poorly in 22 or 23, you're going to feel it in the outer years. And if you start to address some concerns in 22 or 23, you'll actually start to see some improvement in those outer years.
Thank you.
Mr. Rising?
First of all, I'll say it's sad that we lost our whole in-person audience, and we lost 70% of our YouTube audience, when in reality, this is probably the most important thing that we talked about as a district regarding our finances. Obviously, we all want the best education for our kids, but it all revolves around the finances. And that was how I first got interested in being a school board member. So just a couple of quick questions. Well, first of all, the Will County thing. Listen, I get they want to help their residents in COVID times, and a lot of the Will County residents are struggling, as I'm sure a lot of DuPage County residents are. But what the heck were they thinking? Did anybody even raise this, how this will impact the schools?
I could speak, the short answer is, in my mind, we don't know what they were thinking. We were caught off guard by this change. We received a notification from the county clerk the day after it passed. We didn't have any notification beforehand that it was being discussed or being considered. And, you know, I think one of the challenges is for a lot of residents who pay into an escrow for their property taxes, this is really not going to be a benefit for them anyway. If anybody, it's going to benefit the bank that gets to hold that money interest-free for another 60 days, so.
Well, and it really hurts those districts that operate lean or lean fund balance. I can only imagine, I haven't looked at Jol yet, but I imagine they don't maintain a pretty high fund balance. This is going to take a.
We are going to be inconvenienced by this. There are districts that are going to be, that it's going to be a lot more significant in fact than us. That's absolutely true.
Can you also repeat, Matt, you had mentioned, which I think is important for people to hear again, about how Illinois compares to the rest of the country in funding public education? What was that statement you read again?
We are, we are the state, sometimes it's 49th, but you could read it's either the 49th or 50th state when it comes to the state funding percentage of public education. So we are the most reliant on local sources on property taxes out of any state in the country.
Yeah, and I think it's important for people to hear that, that they oftentimes blame the schools for their high property taxes. However, it is a result of the state that decided to defer the funding of public education to the property taxpayers. And by your statement, all 49 other states, or 48, essentially don't put that burden on their property taxpayers, and they put more money into public education.
Yeah, that's correct. The evidence-based funding model, again, that was passed three years ago, is based over a goal of getting that percentage to where the state funds, I believe, 50% of education. Again, as it passed and existed initially, that was a goal that was going to be met many years down the line. And I think unfortunately, we're further away from meeting that goal. But at least how the funding formula was initially passed and designed, it was to address that issue.
And, sorry, Mike, just a couple more. So if you go to slide four, and I want to kind of go to four, then into five. Or I'm sorry, three, and then into four. So that property value where you were talking about, well, we're at about 5.7 billion, and 203 is at 5 billion. So essentially, they're pretty close, right? I mean, well, 700,000, I guess it's not that close. But so essentially, where that really plays into, if you scroll down to the next slide then, is that when you take the 27,000 kids in 2004 or the 16,000 kids in 2003, and divide it into that equalized assessed value, that's where you get that upper-right number of why they have so much more money. In fact, it's approximately 32% more revenue per student that they get from property taxes. And that's really where it comes down to. They can spend a lot more money per student. And where we've had to struggle along, and Jay, didn't we also, between like 2008 and 2012, reduce our budget over $40 million?
Correct.
And, you know, so, and the other thing you did mention is, you know, as a district, and we've talked about this before, we're 80% adequate funding. 203 is 117% of adequate funding, meaning that the state views 203 as having 17 more percent revenue than they actually need to operate their district. And we have 20% less than we need to operate our district. And I think, then, if you could go down to the fund balance slide, is that's why you see such a discrepancy in 203 maintaining such a high fund balance. Now, and let me put that in perspective. 203's budget is almost $300 million. And remember, they have almost half, a little more than half as many kids as us, and 204 has a $365 million budget. 78% fund balance? That means they have $234 million approximately sitting in their fund balance. So for them to give a $10 million rebate? I'm sorry, I mean, come on. You know, and meanwhile, we're operating a leaner district. We don't take advantage of our taxpayers by building up that fund balance. This district has always managed their money well. This district has reduced the budget where we've seen opportunities. We have half as many administrators as almost all of our comparable, eight comparable districts. We spend less money than all of our eight comparable districts, and yet we have some of the highest results academically, if not the highest. So I'm very proud, first of all, of the job Jay and Matt, you guys, have done. I'm proud of this board, over the time that I've been on it, for being fiscally responsible and managing our homeowners' property taxes well and getting the most out of our money. So I just want to thank you guys again.
Mr. Carubin?
Yeah, so I've got three points. The five-year, three-year forecast. I've sat in this chair long enough to see when Mr. Strang gave three-year forecasts in February as a result of the uncertainty of the financial conditions of the state of Illinois. I will be interested to see how Mr. Shipley adjusts his forecast.
Me too.
With the certainty or uncertainty of the state of Illinois. So I think we could just use that as a barometer to see how Mr. Shipley does it and to see how uncertain things are. The other point I'd like to make is, on the expenditure side, we, slide 15, we say that we are aligning our salaries, our expenditures, with our collective bargaining agreements. But our agreements and our, some of our outsourcing contracts are going to be up before those five years. So I will be interested to see in future presentations how those expenditures get forecasted into years. years beyond the term of the agreements. Also on page 15, it says we're spending, it informs us that we're spending no capital expenditures from the operating funds. Take us back up to slide seven. Is this telling me that we are going to take that blue graph to zero? Mr. Shipley?
No, I, I, the numbers shown here are capital spent out of both operating and capital. So what, um, we have really two opportunities or two areas, two, two different buckets, if you will, that we can spend capital funds out of. One is, one is operating, one is capital. A non-operating fund, which is the Capital Projects Fund. This is showing both those combined. Our discussion as we look forward is that the inability or the lack of resources in the operating side is going to pass, pass those expenditures in the non-operating. And the main difference is that is really the source of funds. The operating fund is, and specifically the operations and maintenance fund is primarily or exclusively funded by property taxes. So that's an annual revenue source that comes in each year. The non-operating fund is really one-time revenues and we've, we have built up a balance in our non-operating capital. Projects Fund is a result of some land sales. With the ability we, to transfer some, some previous year surpluses into that fund. We do receive a small amount of interest and, and some other things that go in there. But when we shift from op, the capital from operating to non-operating, I think what we're, what we're really saying is we're going from funding it with a, with a renewable source that, that comes each year to we're funding it with a one-time source that, that gradually gets spent down. And once it's, once it's gone, it's gone. So that's, that's the change. We will see less funding on capital as a result of this, but, but we won't go down to zero. Does that?
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Donnie.
Are you done? Okay. So I agree with Mr. Rising about, it's unfortunate that we lost our audience, but hopefully people watch this on the replay. And I really don't want to extend this meeting longer, but I do have to say a few things. But maybe in the future, if we are looking at marketing ourselves, this, this presentation should have been titled, Why You're Not Getting a $10 Million Refund Like 203. And then we would have had a lot, a very large audience. But I believe slide six is really critical. And you mentioned, so you look at our fund balances bouncing around around 33, 34%. But you mentioned it has, it goes as low as 18% based on the payments and things that go on dynamically in the district. And that's, that's a worrisome point and something that when you compare us to 204 and they're up at 78, or 203 at 78% in their balances, it's just night and day kind of thing. When does the state look at your fund balance and say whether you're in good shape or not? Like you met the 25%. Is there ever a worry that we're going to be assessed at that point when we're at 18%?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. The, this, the state gives a financial award based on your annual financial report that's filed with, as of June 30th. And so that's where that 25% comes from. That's as of the June 30th number. So the, the question would be if, if our revenue streams change or the timing changes significantly. And as we mentioned, this, this Will County change is an example of something that could impact that. We could, we could dip below that 25% and that would hit our, hurt our financial rating. At this time, we're, we're in good shape. We, we received recognition status and over the past several years. So we would be able to go, I don't think we'd be in the critical level where we'd be, be looking at, at going under state review or, or something like that because of our financial situation. But, you know, that, that is, you know, that's why we do want to focus on keeping our fund balances consistent and steady. The, I have one other point on that, which is.
Yeah, you don't want to come in as our new financial leader and suddenly we're not, we're not recognized anymore.
Exactly. Now, the state, the state has, traditionally because of state payment delays, the state will occasionally relook at those ratios and adjust them if they know you, they, part of the reason you, for example, passed, had a deficit was because of a state funding delay. This issue specifically with Will is, is unique because it's, it's dealing with property taxes, which at least in my time I haven't seen. So I'm not sure if the state will be more lenient or, or, or adjust the criteria based on that.
So other things that you didn't mention, but we've refinanced our bonds a couple of times, right, where we've maxed out refinancing. We can't go to that. Not like it would save us a ton of money anymore, but we've done that. We also, people look at the CARES money and they go, oh, that's a lot of money. But Mr. Carubin had a great analysis of that, one of these meetings that we basically got $40 a student the first time and we're getting about $100 a student this time. So it's not big bucks when you're paying 12,600 a student in our district. So. And then the last thing I want to point out is if anyone's interested, they need to spend time watching the city council meeting from this week where the, or last week, where the majority of the agenda was about 204 and the efforts that we're making to try and protect our district from a funding level, from developments and things that can really impact our, our district. And also be aware of the TIF agreement we have with Aurora to similarly watch our finances. So it's like, we're a very careful district that keeps close tabs on what's going on and tries to make sure that we're financially sound. So thanks.
Yeah, I, I'll just, just reiterate a point I mentioned earlier that this forecast does, does assume some reduced staffing as a result of reduced enrollment. So if, if we see some enrollment changes or, or things that are unexpected on that area, that, that could create challenges as part of this forecast.
Before we leave this slide, Mrs. Donnie, when you think of their 78% fund balance, and, and that is the point in time when you receive your second distribution of taxes in June. If you account for those taxes in the next fiscal year, you don't account for it this year, that 78% will immediately drop. And that's another way that you can, from an accounting perspective, make it look like you have less funds than you, than you actually do. We can't do that. Because if we do that, we, our low point in time will be too low. And the other mark, Mr. Rising, another, other comment I'll make is that this is the first time I've come up here and I thought this might be the lightest presentation of the evening.
I guess that's what just, you know, would, would, because we heard about a lot about the, the reduction 203 was doing. And, and that's great for them and their taxpayers. But, you know, Kathy and I were here for, Kathy more so than me, were here for some of the reductions that we had to do with our budget. And you know, if, when we're already operating at 80% of adequate funding, to do a, a rebate like that, we would have to essentially raise our class sizes because most of our money is in staffing, or we'd have to get rid of some programs. I mean, that's what people need to recognize because we, we operate solely. And that's, I guess, where I was going with all my points earlier.
Ms. Peel.
Yeah, I, I think this might be our last budget thing, right, on the board. So I've got to say something. Yeah, this, this has been so interesting. It, it, can you, what you were saying is because 203 passes their budget, that's a different time, that number looks different, that 78%, is that what you're saying?
No, they're, they're able to pass their budget before July 1 because they're more reliant on their local property taxes. And if the state does something silly or decides that they're not going to give all of the money that they've promised, it doesn't really impact them. What I said here is, is that if you receive your two installments of property taxes and one of those installments is at that, just before that high point in time, if you, instead of accounting for it in the fiscal, this fiscal year, if you push it and account it for the next fiscal year, that 78% can drop down dramatically. And you still have the money, you're just accounting for it in the next year. You're deferring those taxes to the next year.
Right, right.
Some districts have been able to do that who have high fund balances. We aren't in that position.
So I, I've been thinking about the $10 million and boy, if we had had $10 million going into this pandemic just sitting around doing nothing. You know, maybe some of the issues we're, we're dealing with wouldn't be going on. I think if we had had an extra $10 million, we would have had smaller class sizes going into this pandemic, which would have made doing a hybrid option a, a more fuller opportunity. Space is still an issue, but I'm, I bet we could have figured that out. But it's the staffing that we have that, that causes the way we are, are looking at our hybrid model. But it scares me for, for the future of this district to continue to be so tight like we are. Because I think reacting to a crisis like we are doing, this is not the way we want to handle it. This is not, you know, it's, it's, I feel like it's like running my own household budget, which is very tight. And that's not always a good thing because it can't handle those emergencies that come up. Sewers explode or something. That would be huge for a homeowner. And not that you can handle the whole thing, but maybe we got to start thinking of not being quite so tight with our budget. And it, it saddens me that we have to already because of everything, start to not continuing to reduce our class sizes or, or increase our, our staffing compared to our student population. So I was looking at slide 10. And you said, you know, once we pay off our debt service, might be a good time to ask the community, because we would have to ask the community, to maybe keep the tax rate at a certain level rather than just going, going back to what we're, where we're at. And when I'm looking at that, at what year are you thinking we would need to start talking about that? Because you don't want to get to 2025, 26 and then ask because now maybe you're not getting the amount that we would need to start having that cushion so that we could start taking care of our maintenance better than $3 million a year and, and start having the staffing that our students do deserve.
Yeah, I think, I think the short answer is it's, it's a topic that we need to start discussing as part of presentations like this and need to, to at least talk at a high level going forward. Again, we're, we're one year off from it being only blew up there. But, but when you start working on some of the, the practical elements, both on, on the community engagement piece and, and preparing for that ask, it's, it's a multi-year process. I think planning on the, planning for our, our educational leadership and how they would look to implement any additional funding, I think is a multi-year process. So I, I definitely think we're, we're at a point where that, that should be part of our, our presentations and discussions going forward. Jay may have a different view, but he won't be there, be here for those. So.
I, I wouldn't mind hearing Jay's opinion.
It's about an 18-month lag from when something gets approved to when you actually start to realize it in the district. So those conversations should probably start, the groundwork should occur probably in 2025 with the work to occur in '26. And you'll have to look at, you know, when the ballot question can be asked. And, and you'll want to work backwards from there with how you're going to promote that and explain it to everyone. West Aurora did this a couple of years ago. They paid off their debt. They called it a no tax increase referendum. And, you know, they, they retired $28 million. They asked for 15 on the operating side. Folks pass it with flying colors and they actually saw their taxes go down. It's just, it's just you're not spending on your house payment anymore. You're moving it over here to your, you know, operating side where you're buying, you know, the groceries and, and fixing roofs on your house and putting new windows on now.
And I just will add, I think it's, this is the time that we have to start having these discussions so that we plan for that. Because just like you said, we don't want to turn around and be there and what do we do with the money? We want to be very strategic. We have to lay the groundwork for it and we have to create a foundation for what we want. Whether it is additional positions to support literacy, to support numeracy. Why do we have to have it? How will it benefit our schools? How will it benefit our children? All of that has to be discussed and reviewed now so that, as mentioned, you know, two years ahead of time, we can prepare for what that's going to be. So those are discussions and conversations we have in addition to the pandemic conversation.
I guess, and the other thing that I'm looking at is if we wait till the end, then we're freezing it at a very smaller percentage rather than, so I'm, I'm saying we need to pick where we want to freeze. I might not be using the right terms, but do we want the .2204 or do we want the .3549? That's where I'm at.
No, that's, that's a, a, a good point. And, and just, yeah, just to, I guess, clarify a little bit. Do we, we'll have one year, that 2025 year where the bond amount, instead of being 27 or 28 million, is, is like 13 million. And so I think your, your question is, is that a good year to, to start it there? Or does it make sense to wait the next year when we officially have no red on that, that chart? Yeah, those, those are all good questions, good ideas. And, and again, it's, it's the, the, the part that Jay mentioned, just even getting it on the ballot and moving that part through is an 18-month process. And I think to Dr. Tally's point to start building up the case for potentially seeking some additional operating revenues, you know, precedes even, even that process. So when you start building, building back, whether you're looking at the 2025 level year or the 2026 level year, you start going back three or four years and, and you get pretty close to, to today.
Right, yeah.
The, the referendum question, that, the question that's actually on the ballot is incredibly complicated and convoluted. And you actually work the math so that if tax rates are dropping, you're asking for enough that it will cover the tax rates should they drop the next year. Or if they're, if tax rates are increasing, you ask for less so that you're covering the, the difference. So the, and it's actually worked into the question. And it's, it's terrible language. I, I'd be happy to get some for you all to just read because you'd be, you'll have to read it. It's, it's a simple paragraph, but you have to read it about 20 times and really tear it apart.
Great. So then I'm making an easy sell.
Again, it just makes it even that much more important to the part Dr. Tally was saying about really building the case, building the explanation and the, the trust and the engagement with the community to be in a position where you know, people, people can go in and, and read that, that ballot question and, and know what it says and make sense of it. So.
Yeah, just got, they've got to be able to see the value. And I, I, I do hope that we move in that direction for this district. It's, it was horrible to go through 2008 and, and go through the cuts that we had to make. You know, every time we start to feel like, hey, we're going to head up, something happens and, you know, we can't predict it. And it just becomes a matter of, this just isn't the way. We, we've got to have a more of a cushion going forward at some point. We got to make those plans. So I appreciate your, your presentation. Thank you so much, you guys.
Ms. Grover, you have anything?
I just have one question. So can you repeat, I think you said it was 20 billion for the Illinois state deficit? Or funds that they owe?
Yeah, as of, as of today, or as of the most recent information available, they are 5.6 billion, I think. 5.6 billion payment backlog. Meaning they've, they've incurred expenses. They've, they've had services provided that they, they've not paid for, for, in 5.6 billion dollars. They have an additional 4.3 billion of outstanding short-term. They have an additional $4.3 billion of outstanding short-term debt, so lines of credit. The largest one of that is with the federal government. The federal government opened a borrowing window to the states at the beginning of the COVID pandemic. Last I heard, Illinois was the only state that needed to take them up on that. They extended up to $5 billion for each state and Illinois is already over $3. So we are, knock on wood, relatively fortunate that compared to other entities, the state has at least prioritized keeping current with payments to school districts. As we look into fiscal year 2022 and on, the question is when maybe that line of credit dries up, when they hit that max $5 billion, you know, will that, will they still be able to stay on time with payments? I think, and again, the context of having about $10 billion outstanding debt, if you need context for that large of a number is that that is about half their operating budget.
The reason I ask that is because with evidence-based funding, if they are remaining stagnant for another two years, which is 2023, and then you're supposed to be full 100% funded by 2027, which is only four years later, I don't see that happening. And then Jay had mentioned how the number of students is decreasing, but with evidence-based funding, it's based on your 12 categories. So even though we might have a decrease in the number of students, those categories might increase, like we might have more ELL learners, we might have more special needs kids. So we would need more money, like we would be able to obtain, for more money at it because they won't have the funding. So I just want to, is that correct how I'm understanding?
That's spot on, yeah. That 2027 goal for evidence-based funding to be fully funded was an ambitious goal when it was passed three or four years ago. They, from day one, were not on pace to make that. And then the pandemic's obviously only accelerated that. So, so yeah, I realistically don't, don't see us getting, getting anywhere close to that funding goal on a state level. And you're absolutely correct, for the district, that means that we're sitting at 80% funding. You know, right now, we've been roughly 80% since the start of evidence-based funding. I think it's likely our funding percentage goes down. And the other thing, if and when there is an increase in evidence-based funding, if every district goes down a couple percent, that just, that just diverts even more money to the tier-one districts, the districts that are currently tier-one, too. So I think we are really in a, in a tough spot with, with state funding and anticipating any sort of increases in the foreseeable future.
Thank you.
So it hasn't been a good day for the state of Illinois based on our board presentations, and I'm not going to help much either. You know, in the eight years I've been here, I always look at that graph on page three and that little orange circle about state funding pretty much dictates whether we're in good shape or bad shape. First of all, to the taxpayers of District 204, you're a most consistent funding source. Thank you for that. Because clearly, the state of Illinois has not been. In my eight years, we've had one good year, really two, when evidence-based funding was passed. It looked better for District 204 and we were much more optimistic. And in fact, the second year, I think, the legislature did pass an increase in state funding that also assists. But now there is clear uncertainty. As both of you stated, the evidence-based funding was based that 10 years, they would get it done. But no one, from day one, that was a misnomer. When we looked at it, it would be a 15 to 20 year. And now with the pandemic and it being flat, to Ms. Rover's point, it's going to take a long time to, besides our bonds, which are important, it would have taken us a long time to reach the 100% based on the evidence-based funding. The bonds may help us through this. Categoricals have been flat for a long time. And clearly salaries go up, but they've been flat. Two other things that I've heard over the course of my time here on the board is pension cost shift and possible property tax freeze. Since our legislators have not been in session much, what are you guys hearing in terms of your colleagues about the status of those? Are those two added factors or have they been relaxed?
My experience, Mr. Razak, is that those are continually in play in Springfield. I think something's going to have to happen with the pensions and baking it into the evidence-based funding formula or just progressively shifting a little bit more of the burden on school districts is something that's eventually going to happen. We didn't put that into play in this forecast because we're not hearing that discussion down in Springfield. I think they're really, you know, so overwhelmed with the pandemic and how to get the state back to work that they just aren't there yet. But I think as you look out into those five years, that'll be more discussions at the board table and more discussions that Mr. Shipley will have with you.
The only thing I would add is part, if there is a chance at increased state funding at some point in this five years, it likely, the other side of that coin is likely going to be one of those two areas. So it's hard to see a situation where we, where additional state funding truly isn't that positive. It's more likely that any additional state funding is used to offset one of those two topics, either pension cost shift or property tax freeze.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, guys. My guess, not to contradict Mr. Strang, who thought the budget forecast would be one of the lighter presentations today. My guess is professional learning will be much lighter. So do we have a professional learning update?
We do. They are here waiting to present.
Great.
I might have fallen asleep in the back.
Welcome, Rup, and thank you for your patience.
All right, good evening. We'd like to thank the board and Dr. Tally for providing us the opportunity to highlight a number of professional learning experiences that have provided to our educators and mostly presented by our educators over the past year. Joining me tonight are Brian Jovanini, Director of Innovation and Instructional Leadership, and Candy Michelli, Director of Professional Learning. Before we get started, we just wanted to share that despite the challenges the pandemic has brought to the world of education, there has been a silver lining. Tonight, we're excited to share about these professional learning activities because they highlight the ongoing hard work and effort put forth by our teachers, support staff, and administrators. Each day brings a new opportunity for learning and our staff continuously demonstrates perseverance and dedication to learning and supporting one another. We're proud of the Indian Prairie staff and look forward to sharing these celebrations with you tonight. The purpose of this presentation is to provide members of the board updates in the area of professional learning that directly impacts our board and district goals. We will highlight a number of professional learning activities that have taken place since the last update, which was last January 2020. We have reserved time at the end of the presentation, but feel free to ask any questions along the way. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Brian and Candy.
Thank you. Good evening and happy to be with you tonight. We wanted to start with the visual representations that you have seen along the way over this course of the school year already with some of the presentations. But we wanted to take a moment and really make that connection to our mission statement of inspiring all our students to achieve their greatest potential. And the reason why we have these listed through each of our professional learning opportunities is to make those connections between Portrait of a Graduate, our SCL commitment, those competencies to the castle wheel, and our equity, diversity, and inclusion. So what we did as a district, our curriculum instruction team, was really make the commitment to make these more visually, expose our staff to them time and time again so that when we were working on our content, if we were having a specific course, we weren't just teaching that specific content, but that we were showing different layers of embedding SCL, equity, and Portrait of a Graduate competencies throughout everything we do. For tonight, we wanted to make sure that we highlighted a couple of different areas of professional learning. We know that you've already had some updates for our SCL and equity. So certainly there is pieces of professional learning in those different areas. But tonight, we wanted to highlight an activity that we did 204 learning together, our new teacher induction, our institute days. And then at the end of our presentation, we wanted to provide for you some information about a program or piloting for our new teacher mentoring program. Before we jump into some of the 204 learning together, we did want to give you some historical perspective on some of the courses that we offered in the summer. Around this time every year, we get together as a team and we really look at our priorities and look at what's coming ahead and decide what's on our plate and what is it that we want to provide professional learning for, taking in the feedback from our administrators and teaching staff. When we hit the pandemic and we're trying to figure out how to do this virtually, we really had to look at what was it that our teachers, what tools are our teachers using in April and May and project what they may need to use in August. So you'll see up there, many of those resources are digital resources. But at the same time, we wanted to hold on to some of the momentum we had with some of our content-specific courses, like Number Talks, Computational Thinking, World of Work, AVMR, which is our Math Recovery Program. Those are things that we've really valued and wanted to hold on to. But we really had to approach it because all of these courses, almost, most of these courses you see were provided in a in-person format. And so we had to work with our presenters and instructors to determine whether or not it's something that they could do in a virtual environment. And we're so fortunate that all of our presenters for these classes are in our district and they were willing to take on that task. And although it took a little extra work and time to figure some of those pieces out, we were able to provide all these courses in June and July. We duplicated them again in July so that our staff had access to the digital platforms that we thought they would need in the summer, or I'm sorry, for the start of school year. With that in mind, and Doug, if you want to go to the next slide, we were increasingly becoming a little stressed about all the professional learning activities that teachers would need on those institute days. Because at the time, usually we have a district institute day and a building institute day. And after looking at all the needs that would occur for starting of the school year in a potentially hybrid or remote environment, we really knew that there was a lot of resources and tools that our teachers would need. And so therefore, we set up, in place of Samurai Camp, which we've shared with the board before, it's a teacher camp, teacher-led teaching camp. That's been very popular that we co-host with other districts. And a lot of our teachers present and go to that camp. It was canceled. So we felt that since that date was already reserved in our calendars and we had to replan some pieces for it, that we would offer it to our 204 staff. Not sure, given all the summer and what people were dealing with in their own lives getting ready for the school year as well, if we'd have as many people attend as we had hoped. I think we, when we looked at the numbers, I think we had somewhere around between, around 500 staff participate in each of the, or over the course of all the sessions. So we are really, we were grateful because we also looked at this as a time where we could record some of the sessions so we can build our PD-on-demand library so that if, as we're looking into institute days or later learning for teachers as they're prioritizing what they need for their classrooms, they can always go back to something that they might miss later.
Candy talked about a handful of things within that 204 learning activity that really helped jumpstart a professional learning as we transitioned to remote learning and hybrid learning and that preparation and how we were going to model what that could look like for teachers. If you see some of those titles, you'll see some intentional design where we are crossing the pathways to give some teachers ideas of what that would look like. You'll see in the SCL strand, a handful of our digital tools that were embedded in there. So we were using those to bring teachers in, but then also showcasing how we can embed social-emotional learning, especially for example with like a Paradex or Nuzella, how we could drive that to start our classroom cultures with these digital tools and support our students in their learning. When you look at the Portrait of a Graduate strand, you can see a number of different ways in which we talked about engagement, student learning, and just tools that we can model for teachers so they could be successful on day one and now ultimately as we transition to a hybrid learning setting.
We also wanted to make sure that all of our courses still met our standards of high engagement and application and feedback. So embedded within each of these sessions, we had opportunities for the, for people to practice the skill and have some of that coaching support while they're in the sessions. So before we were preparing, as we were preparing for Institute Day, we also were in the process of welcoming our new teachers. And we had a majority of our staff that we were, some of them being first-year teachers, never actually finished their student teaching. And so we knew that we had to come in with preparing them and providing those supports in advance. However, we also knew that as we're preparing for Institute Day, we were going to be providing a lot of professional learning for all our staff because technically, none of our teachers had taught in a hybrid or fully remote in the expectations that we were aligning for them to start the school year. So we wanted to lead with the idea of what we've shared already with the Portrait of a Graduate, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, and Social-Emotional Learning. Because typically, we spent some time in those areas, but then we spend the rest of the school year devoting the 14 hours of required learning for them over the course of school year so they have opportunities to meet with mentors and teachers and our directors for those areas. But we also knew that this was such, that was the plate. Those pieces were so important that we wanted to lead with that for our new teachers, knowing that they'd get some of the professional learning with the rest of the staff in their buildings and as a district.
If you, just for an example of what this looked like, on day one, our director and CNI team collaborated to really build a extensive experience for our teachers to prepare them for what lies ahead. And then on day two, I'll just talk a little bit about an example of what high school looked like. Every level did this, but high school came together as the three of them and really developed a common language and common message about who we are as a district that aligned to our message from day one. And they did an outstanding job of really just supporting teachers, being flexible, and preparing a setting where we talked about relationships first and really setting a culture of learning for our students in that remote learning setting that we're going to be embarking on a week later.
We also felt that our efforts, and we shared our new teacher induction goals with you in the past, but we really felt that it was so important that we had that culture of care, as Brian was talking about, that we talk about for our students, but also that culture of care for our new teachers, that we still wanted them, even though we were not able to be with them in person, we did put a hybrid model together so that they were still able to be in their buildings. They still had access to directors and, or, I'm sorry, their assistant principals and principals in their buildings as well as their teacher leaders to support them. But then they also had some of those, we were modeling some of those, what would be considered a hybrid model where we had some things online for them and some things that they were able to do in person. So we felt that that was a good start for us, too, because it was, it was also a way for us to practice some of those skills that we were expecting of others.
As we transitioned from new teacher induction to the actual institute days, all that work from the summer learning, the 204 learning together, and ultimately, the new teacher induction kind of helped us get the framework established and set up for what Institute Day could look like in terms of professional learning. So what you see in the professional learning for our institute days and the remote learning days looked like was teacher choice. And that was really, really important for us to provide an experience that supported individual teachers on what they needed and when they needed it. So our development of that professional learning experience not only provided secretist learning opportunities in addition to our as secretist learning opportunities where teachers could really hone in on what they needed to. We had strands, we had experiences, but then we developed a number of different things to support them on what they needed. There's just a handful of examples of what you could see up there. We also developed some heavy hitters that we knew were going to be critically important and some would be new to teachers, for example, Google Classroom. Even if a teacher had used Google Classroom in the past, it was going to need to look a little bit differently because of the organizational structure to be successful. So our team did a great job of developing that, those professional learning to support teachers because some of these tools were going to be new. For example, Zoom was another great example of that. All the tools- All the tools that came with Zoom that we didn't always know about, how could we utilize chat to support student learning or check-ins for students? How could we use the poll feature and all the other things that are available to Zoom? In addition, starting to get teachers get used to synergy and what that would look like in their classroom. And you can see all the other offerings that are available to teachers and what that could look like, and how they could utilize that. Within each one of those, you saw a common strand where it gave teachers an opportunity to learn, but also then apply, which we'll talk about here in a little bit as well. So we try, when we develop these professional learnings throughout the year, and whatever we were trying to do, whether it was our online virtual over the summer, our book experiences, our book talks, anything where there is a professional learning experience, we tried to use this feedback loop, where it was learning, and this is something that we wanted to model for our teachers, then the application of it, and then come back for some feedback and reflection, how did it go? When we did our remote learning days, we did a handful of experiences where, instead of doing a 45 or 50-minute professional learning, we did a 30-minute, where it was a 15-minute kind of mini lesson. And that was really important for us to do, kind of show what that could look like in a classroom setting virtually. And then we gave them 15 minutes to apply it. Go build something, go create something that you're going to use with your students, so that you can use it on day one. In that application time, we provided frameworks, templates, anything that they could kind of take with and adapt, that they could use for their classroom. While they were doing that, we were there, asking questions in the chat, responding to what's happening, and being flexible and responding to the needs of our students in that lesson right there in there. And then at the end, we just kind of reflected and talked about feedback and how they could take this learning further and go to the next step. So all these things, we like to utilize this loop, just like what we see in our classrooms, where we kind of transitioned to that professional learning over the past couple of years to really showcase the application time and really giving teachers an opportunity to reflect on their practice and support them.
I also want to highlight the fact that, given the fact that so many of our resources that we go to, oftentimes we have to pay for professional learning to send people to conferences. There were so many things that were open and what people were taping in webinars, that we were able to really leverage the opportunity for people to go in, and we could give them resources if they wanted to know something a little bit more, or if they wanted some information before they come to this, to a session. We could share so many different webinars through some of our publishing companies and some of the other, some of the other pieces that we usually are, you know, it could be like $150 for one individual to go to it, and now it's something that's actually free, and it's really, really good. So we're excited that we were able to use a lot of that for our asynchronous learning for our teachers as well. So another update that we wanted to share with you is, I had shared earlier when we talked about our new teachers, is that they had those 14 hours of professional learning. And over the past couple of years, we've been trying, we've been increasing our access to our teachers in different ways, so that we would have some building-owned of those hours and then some district-owned. And as I said, it was really aligned to those three pathways of portrait graduate, SCL, and equity. A couple of years ago, we did want to try out a mentor program at one of the high schools to be able to pilot that and let them try out a couple of different pieces, and so we gave them some hours that they would be able to work with their new teachers. And then last year, and around this time last year, hearing that it was going well, we then increased some of those hours for each of the other, the other two high schools, and a plan was put in place. So as they had all those plans in place, we still had not the same level of mentoring program at the elementary and middle school, unless buildings owned that piece, and they took that on as part of their professional learning that they wanted to have in their building. And so it's something, a goal of all of ours that we've been trying to put together, and at the same time, we had all these other competing things going on for our new teachers. And as we talked about before, that culture of care, they're in professional learning every minute of their day as a new teacher. So really, they're not only attending all their institute days and their PLCs, but they're also meeting with their teams, and they've been, at times, meeting with people in their building to help support them. So we've really put a pause on those 14 hours for those other grade levels, kindergarten through eighth grade. And it was luck would have it, we were starting to plan what we were going to do for the second semester, because it was, we still valued those 14 hours. IEA and Katie Pop from, IPEA, worked together, and they identified us as a district that we could work on, pilot a mentor program. And so with this mentor program, our teachers that are first and second year have access to a virtual coach. A virtual coach is not necessarily someone that's in our district, but it is content area-based, and they, so they're based on grade level bands and race and ethnicity as well. And they're able to meet with this virtual coach up to five hours a week, which is probably not going to happen, but if they needed to, they could, they can meet with those individuals up to five hours a week. Those virtual coaches are there for content, but also in effort to support just the whole teacher and other aspects. Sometimes it's really nice when you have those connections and those networks built outside of your system, just so that you can hear different ways of thinking and different perspectives, and apply some of that to the work that you're doing. In addition, those new teachers also are aligned with a building mentor within their building, and those building mentors are provided training through IEA focused on the Danielson Model, which aligns for teacher evaluation system. And so each year, our principals or sometimes our other evaluators will meet with our new teachers and go over our, the Danielson Framework for Teaching, and then also show them how that aligns with our teacher evaluation system. But this particular training really allows our building mentors to go a little bit deeper about what it looks like for each of those areas of teaching, to expand our teachers from knowing what it is to be, what a proficient teacher might look like, and what do those look for, and helping them move towards into the excellent category when they're ready. Really, what does a lesson look like? How do we embed the student voice? What's the student engagement piece? What are the relationships you're building? And the assessment and feedback pieces to that as well. And so our, within that system, they have a platform, and our new teachers are able to access different lessons that are, that are put within, again, from the Danielson group, as well as virtual coaches and other, building mentors and other new teachers. So it really is, we just started. Some of our new teachers have already met with their virtual coaches and their building mentors. We're still making matches and pairs. But what we're hoping is that throughout this process, there's a pre-survey, a survey in the middle, and a survey at the end, and it would really provide us a lot of great feedback about what it is that we currently have been doing to be supportive, especially during this time, and then what is it that we can do for next year. IEA is really hoping that they'll have funding for next year, but even in the short period of time, working with them and working with some of our new teachers and aligning some of the work with Katie Pop and the association, I've already learned a lot about what we could do if this, if we weren't able to receive the funding from the IEA, that there's a lot of different differentiation pieces, because really, since this particular program's for first and second-year teachers, we have over 80 new teachers as of right now in our district, and quite frankly, they all need, everyone needs support. All of our teachers need support at this time. And so really differentiate the needs based on where the teacher, how long the teacher's been teaching, is it a new teaching position for them, are they new to 204? All of those pieces are things that we can differentiate along the way that we've been trying to do, but now we have a model and some places that we can look for for the feedback that they provide us, that we can try to make some advancements in those areas.
So what have we learned during this past experience over the past year and in terms of professional learning that we can carry beyond COVID-19 experiences? One, that I think that we'd all agree here, we have innovative teachers and amazing teachers who run with ideas and just do great things for kids on a daily basis. Whether it's a new idea, they're connected nationally to strong instructional practices, to their content, and are constantly staying updated on what's happening in other classrooms that will help their students in the moment in their classrooms, whether it's through social media, watching webinars, they are constantly looking for the best instructional practice to help their classroom and their team. The other thing is, that I think we found a lot of value in, is there is a spot for virtual professional learning in the long term. It is powerful, it is flexible, it gives not only our participants' choice, it gives our instructors' choice, too. Before COVID hit, we started to kind of pilot this a little bit and what this could look like. PJ Professional Learning at 7:00 PM in the morning, it gave our teachers some more opportunities to engage in some professional learning that they wanted to do that wasn't always available right after school because of their schedules or demands of what that looks like. So we found that there is a strong value in place for this in the long term, where we can really support our teachers in a lot of different ways. The other thing is responsiveness, flexibility, that we, as educators, continuously have to respond to the needs of what our staff need and want, and we are continuing to do that. Some other things that we are continuing to look at is, when we are providing our professional learning, to continue to emphasize the why. If we're talking about digital tools and resources, not leading with the tool, but what are you trying to do in your classroom with student learning or your content? Oh, let me ask some questions, and here's a digital resource that can help you with that, with feedback, with engagement, or other things that you're trying to do in your classroom, and leveraging of the conversation in that way. So all those are some ways in which that we have responded and learned over the past year, and how we can provide a better professional learning experience, and we'll kind of look at as we start to develop professional learning for this summer and spring and the next school year as well.
So we just wanted to share, we, I think each year, share a number of courses that we offer. And this year, I did include some of the district institute day numbers, which normally I pull that up, because that's a required part of learning for all our staff. So usually, when I share those classes with you, it's just the optional courses. And the reason that we wanted to make sure that we shared that with you is, one, professional learning is still going strong, and people are asking for it every day, and a lot of it is happening at the building level. A lot of it's happening with our administrators and our teacher leaders. These are just the courses on the, where it says 418, they are, those are the courses that we load into our True North Logic system. It's a performance matter system, where teachers can go in and choose to sign up. We also house their attendance for things like school improvement and district institute days. So what we, I personally was thinking, we're probably going to put a pause on some things, so that teachers can really focus on getting things going in the classroom. We initially were thinking, we were just going to give everyone kind of a little bit of break, but people started asking for more and wanted to continue going, which is a huge sentiment to the hard work of our teachers. And what they, and they were really giving us feedback about what they really needed and how we can help support them. So we continued, even after those institute days of the PLCs, we would reserve an hour, and we would just do an hour of office hours, where people can just come in and just ask for help, or we would actually run, hey, we're going to do a Google Classroom advanced portion, or Paradek advanced, for those of you that already dabbled in already. So we were really just trying to figure out how we can meet that, the right fit, so we're not overdoing it, but also not, like, not under, not providing enough support at the same place. The other piece to celebrate is that participation level. It certainly is not to say that we had 24, you know, 24,000 people. Some of those, those numbers reflect someone that attended maybe six, seven, eight classes. But it really does show the amount of people that were actively engaged in learning to help support themselves, as well as their students in our classroom. And then another huge piece that we thought was just amazing, we looked at it, is just the optional professional learning. Those are the amount of people that we had participating in sessions from January all the way through January this year. So we just really felt like that was a great celebration to the hard work efforts of all our teachers and our instructors that put those classes together. And that was, the one other last piece I wanted to share with you, is this is a list of instructors. They are all 204 staff members, who have provided usually more than one course over the course of time this past year. What I had shared before is, there is so much professional learning happening every day at the building level as well, so it certainly does not reflect those teachers' leaders that are willing to run a PLC, or the building principal might be using their building-level Title II funds to support a book study and ask teachers' leaders to do that as well. So this is not encompassing of all the people in our buildings that are running some of these courses, but these are the teachers that we are thankful that were willing to step up and from the district level provide some of the classes.
These are just a handful of feedback that our teachers gave after our professional learning. We just wanted to highlight these on, just one, to thank our instructors over the past year for all that they've done to support our wider teacher staff and how they can support students in the classroom. But you can see in a handful of these comments, just some of the things that they're going to take from that professional learning, that they're going to carry not only now, but also in the future, which we think is really, really powerful, and some of the things that they're going to learn from this experience that will be beneficial for them in the long run, and then continued engagement into our digital resources and how that can support student engagement and learning on a continuous basis now, next year, and the future, and continued progression as we talk about student learning for our district.
And we use all the feedback we get. We'd like our instructors to go through the surveys when they get an opportunity to reflect on their own, on their own classes, but then we review that and determine whether or not is there next steps as part of the feedback? Is there some things that they wish that they had, they wanted more from? Is there something, feedback in the sense of, I wish they would have done this differently? We get a lot of great ideas, and it provides us a sense of that we're either hitting the right target, or we might have to adjust. So with that in mind, we are already, our Institute Day for February has already been planned. We have a handful of our groups and levels going out to countywide, so we'll be attending the GPH countywide conferences that align with their content area that they spend most of their teaching time with. Elementary and a handful of other staff are staying in. Elementary has a wonderful, several keynote speakers focusing on some social studies. And our student services, given the fact, this is a silver lining, given the fact that we are in a time where most people are doing everything virtual, they were able to acquire a handful of wonderful speakers and presenters that normally we would never be able to get, because we wouldn't be able, one, we wouldn't be able to pay for, and then all to fly in and stay and be in hotels, but also because they're always booked in other places, and now they can do something for Indian Prairie and go to another district. So there's a lot of different, a great opportunity for presenters from the student services line area to have, to hear from a wide variety of speakers. We also have some of our other groups that have, for the same reason, they have a lot of presenters that they wouldn't be able to normally have, with, work with them on, in a virtual format. So we're grateful for those opportunities. Moving into spring and summer, we are already planning, again, still looking at those pathways and how to support, but we're also thinking about the feedback that we're getting from our teachers between now and then, so that we'll make some mid-course directions, and certainly have already started thinking about Institute Day for the fall. I think that's it. Any questions or thoughts?
Ms. Pio.
I had, you just mentioned the speakers for the day. When you have so many, are they going to be recorded so that they could see them there in one another?
So there is, some have given permission and some have not. So if there's been permission provided, they're going to try to do that, and we, that's the same thing for, for some of our sessions. We've tried to provide as much recordings as possible, just because of, everyone's unable to attend something, that they can go back to it. So when we're allowed and able to, we certainly do that, and then we store it. Some give us a timeline, like you can only release it for 30 days, or if they're using their own, some are choosing not to use Zoom, so they have another format that they're providing to us through some other webinar features that they have. They might redo their recording and then send it to us. So it really depends if they are allowing us to do it or not, but they've certainly asked that.
Okay. I mean, it is kind of interesting that even though we're in the pandemic and it's been hard, there are some benefits coming from this, and I do appreciate the point where folks are looking at the training, not just for right now, they're looking for it for in the future, too, when we're, we're back in one, in live person. So I really, I applaud you guys for everything you've done. Thank you so much.
I think that other benefit, what you said, though, about recording, has been huge for us, because there have been a lot of teachers who've made comments about how it's nice to go back and kind of rewind and watch it again, just because in a live, actual professional development session, you don't always get that. And some of the things that we did this year were very complicated, and sometimes you needed to see it a couple of times to get it, and that was another great benefit of the professional development and doing it in this manner.
I agree.
Thank you so much. I had one just quick comment and then one quick question, but thank you so much. It is imperative for our staff, we focus so much on our students, which is critical, but our staff, socially, emotional, their mental health, you know, just being sure that we can support them in their growth and development, but especially during this time, trying to keep some semblance of a little bit of normalcy, because we always have prided ourselves on the professional development that our staff, that we, that we make opportunity for our staff to receive. So thank you so much, because I know that truly helps them just from a professional standpoint, but just to feel, to feel good about themselves and what they're trying to deliver to our students. On the 204 instructors and teacher leaders, page 13, yeah, page 13, I just wondered, are these courses that they have gone to, have they learned how to do this from other areas? Are they courses that some of them have developed? Or can you just share a little bit about how they've become teachers and instructors and leaders in our district?
Sure. Some of them have, are either expertise in certain areas, so we have some that have been using digital tools for a while, and they've been going to conferences and, and working with us, or they've been in trainings with us, and so we've seen that they have a skill set that would help others. And so we've seen that they have a skill set that would help others. Others have approached us and said, hey, I'd really like to do this class. And so we kind of have a process of how we go through that and support them, if it's something that... And again, we are always looking at, does it align with the pathways? Because we are really trying to make sure that we're not having competing, or none, you know, something that doesn't align with something that we're doing. It needs to be within those pathways. But we do then support our teachers. Currently, we have a new course right now, and she has instructed the classes before, but she really wanted to do something specific for her department. And so we had purchased a book, and then we met as a group. We went through all the criteria for the class because we also wanted to make sure that we're having all of the standards of, you know, there should, obviously there should be some learning, there should be some connections to the classroom. We want you to try some of these things with your students, get that feedback, and then practice some of these skills and have those deeper conversations with their colleagues. And so we went ahead and built that class with her, but that was upon her request. So it's, it's one of those things that it's, it's all, the athlete might go to a conference and come back. There's also times where we see something and we think it might be really good, and we'll send a handful of people with that thought process of, we'd like you to do this in your building, we'd like you to share out with your principal, or we'd like you to run a class, we'd like to meet with you after and get some ideas and see how it impacts the work that we do in our district, is it something for us? So sometimes we tap individuals, and then building principals do this, do similar things for their teachers, and teachers can ask to attend something and then share that out at the building level as well.
This is a great number of staff within our district that are exhibiting leadership and to the benefit of their coworkers and their co-staff. So thank you to our staff for taking that leadership initiative, and thank you for making those opportunities available for them.
We couldn't do it without them, that's for sure.
Agreed. Ms. Dunning.
So the classes that you presented, are they just for the teachers? Like TAs can't take them, or?
A majority of our classes are open to everyone. There are a handful of classes that we actually partner with some of our curriculum work, and so sometimes curricular materials are associated with that because they're part of that learning process. So depending upon, because some of those things are quite expensive and specifically used for particular content areas in classrooms, that we allow teachers, teaching assistants to attend for their learning, but they won't necessarily get those curricular materials because they're not, they're not supposed to be doing the direct instruction in those ways. But we welcome our teaching assistants to a majority of our classes. And we've had quite, especially in the environment we have right now, we've had a lot of teaching assistants come in and wanting to learn. And then we've...
We've also, we've also done a handful of trainings and professional learning for our teaching assistants as well, targeted at what they need and some of the questions that they've asked us, and we've responded. Candy and I had an opportunity to do a handful of them in the fall, just to support the questions that they were asking and the professional learning they needed. So kind of a balance of both sides and then a combination of the two, where we find a middle ground of support.
Because I was trying to remember, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have like three thousand one hundred teachers. And when you look at slide twelve, I mean, that really is impressive how many classes and things were taken, so thank you very much. And I'm very happy and pleased that this was available for people, and keep up the good work.
So I got to be honest, I was, I kind of hit a low point in the meeting. It was after nine. And, you know, we had the COVID presentation, and then the budget, you know, it's... So I was, I was hitting a low point, but I, I feel rejuvenated, honestly, because I'm feeling the energy, I'm feeling the excitement, and, and I know you guys like your jobs because you could see that energy, and that is, that's a vital part of being in this role, being the advocate, looking for those little opportunities, and getting other people to then teach. And so, you know, so thank you for bringing me back. I love what you're doing, very impressive.
Mr. Rising.
More of thanks again as well. You know, this is kind of one of those areas as a district that I felt we've always been a leader in, from professional development, when we started doing PD Wednesdays way back when, to professional learning and all the stuff we're doing online. So just kudos and thanks to everybody in the professional learning department, curriculum instruction, core curriculum, digital learning, all of you guys, all the staff leaders and teachers. What we're doing with new teachers is amazing, it's great. It, it really, I'm sure the feedback you get from those new teachers is just like, wow. You know, I mean, I, I can only imagine how excited they are to get that kind of introduction into the district, or you're going through that inclusiveness and welcoming environment and portion of graduated SEL stuff. And, and, you know, this, this remote or online learning that we're currently in due to a pandemic, none of us ever foresaw we were going to be doing this. We just thought it was for snow days, right? And now that's what the majority of our teachers have been doing for the majority of this year. And I think it's wonderful that you guys have all pivoted as well to help some of our teachers with those best practices and those classroom tips and tricks and tools and everything else. And I really feel what you guys do is a big reason, a huge reason of why teachers stay in our district, because they feel supported and they know that they can always go to learn more and that all these people that I mentioned that are part of this are always there for them and always willing to listen to new ideas of where additional training can happen. So like everybody said, keep it up, you know, the board is extremely thankful to all of you, as I'm sure our teachers are, so great work.
Mr. Robert.
I just wanted to echo what Mark said. One of our district goals is to hire and retain high-quality effective teachers. And I, in looking at your presentation, it's clear that you are listening to the teachers' needs, what they want, you are there when they need help. I mean, that's, that's like, as Mark said, why we are able to keep our good teachers. If you can, because I don't think a lot of people know that our teachers have to have required professional learning development and how many hours they actually put into this. Can you tell us what is, how many hours a teacher is required per year for professional development?
Sure. So for licensure for our state, they have to have a hundred and twenty hours. But our hours that we host for school improvement in districts, over the course of five years, the hours that we put in for school improvement days and our district days actually give everyone all the hours they need in order to achieve their hundred and twenty. So really, when we're seeing our teachers go above and beyond those hours, it's really, they're do, they're not doing it just to keep their licensure, they're doing it for personal growth, to help themselves, to help someone else, to help their students, which I think speaks to all the hard work and effort that they put in, that's always above and beyond. Just that, because they really don't need, they don't really need to do any more than just showing up on those days that are already days that they're working, you know, they're working, they're throughout the day. So these are typically hours after school.
So it's one twenty plus that they're doing? Just one quick question, is there certain, are there certain requirements that they have to take? And then the rest they can choose?
For, within our district, they, there are, on occasion, some things that we set up depending upon if there's, there's sometimes legislation dictates some of the things that we have to do. But there is, a lot of times, there might be an initiative that's going on that we look at and say, does everyone need this? And if so, how are we going to get this particular? We did that with the Alice, the Alice trainings a couple of years ago as well, that we knew that there was some, a certain level that we had to get everyone through, and how are we going to do that with the size of our district? But there's also times where it might just be specific to a title or a position that they're required. A lot of our related service staff have different requirements than our, our teachers. And so that we try to find, we have to monitor when some of those change or if there's something new, so that we can make sure we put those things in place for them.
Thank you.
Board President Rezek, before you, I know you, you usually close it out here. I, I do want to say in addition to the amazing teacher leaders that we have who offer their time to, to provide support, support to our staff, we do, you know, Brian and Candy are always yes to whatever teachers are asking for and whatever they need. And so sometimes they make it sound easy, but trying to find people who can come and deliver for our teachers who need the support, they're constantly looking for ways to support our teachers and are passionate about it. And so I just want to make sure that during this time that I also thank them for all of their efforts with them.
I'll try to keep my comments short so Mr. Carubis doesn't hit another low point. But I've been in the district since nineteen ninety-one, that's almost twenty-nine years. To Mr. Rising's point, professional development has always been a high point in the district. But since my retirement in two thousand twelve, educational change is exponential and required that professional development staff, to your point, Mr. Carrius, to take a step forward, not to mention a pandemic. Sometimes, stuff like the pandemic makes necessity kind of exponentially makes change happen. My few comments is this, the digital readiness that occurred in a very short time cannot be understated. What happened in months, really, in this district and districts across the United States, got accomplished, it would have taken years. Without that pandemic, it would have taken years. People were in desperate, desperate need to make the paradigm shift from in-person instruction to remote instruction, and it was done quickly, and it was done well, and, and to the benefit of our kids. So that cannot be understated. I really appreciate, another understatement for me, and it was mentioned several times in the presentation, is teacher... There was a lot of top-down. And now, more than ever, teachers are participating, teachers are choosing, and that's the best kind of staff development. And that's occurred in this district, and it has been a change in philosophy and a paradigm shift. And I'm glad you guys support that because that's when best learning occurred. Really appreciate the quick changes that you've made. You guys pivoted very quickly. In addition to a pandemic, there have been social issues and political issues that teachers really needed assistance in order to help their students, and that was done within days. So that's to your credit. And I really encourage you to keep on fleshing out that teacher mentor program. Well, Mr. Carrius used to make the presentations about how people are not going into the teaching profession and how much support that they need in order to stay in the teaching profession. And the first three to five years are so important. And if we can help these new teachers address some of these issues, it's great. And we need to do that because we're going to be struggling to find new teachers. So thank you for that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have a legislative update. I know Mr. Rising probably will have a short board update.
So I'm still working on our IASB presentation. I had a long discussion with Eris over our work with City of Aurora and IGA. I will send an informational email to the board, my discussion and the summary that took place and my further work that I will be doing on this, and I'll give you another update on February twenty-second.
Ms. Dunning.
Thank you. I just have one quick comment. Superintendent Tally already alluded to, but I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that this is Black History Month again, and I really just wanted to thank our staff and our teachers for their support of everything they do to recognize the cultural contributions for all of our students and all of their families in this district because they do an excellent job. And especially during Black History Month, they really take the opportunity to share the contributions of Black Americans in this country. And it's really important because it's not just Black history, it's American history, it's our, it's our country's history. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to really thank our staff for all that they do in recognizing and supporting our students during, during this particular month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with that?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Will we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.